Hey, good evening. Thank you all for your patience. We started a little bit late because our public hearing went over a bit, but I will now call the meeting to order in compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code. I call to order a regular voting meeting of the, I'm sorry, a board information, no, this is a regular voting meeting, sorry, of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, March 28th, 2024, at 6:24 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. So, welcome, and thank you very much for joining us. All right, so our first item is under the President's Report, and I wanted to, is this, Secretary Boswell, is this the part that you were going to discuss, or is that later?
The Community Engagement Summary is Agenda Item 5.1.
Okay, thank you, thank you, okay. So, our, over the last eight weeks, I will just do a little preview of what you're going to hear more about from Secretary Boswell a little bit later, but over the last eight weeks, the board has been engaged in listening sessions with our community around the district scorecard. Many of you have been part of that. We appreciate your time. And tonight, the board will continue this discussion as we talk about some of what we heard and our own learned experiences. So, in the coming weeks, we will also hear from our Lone Star Governance Coach. She'll provide a summary of feedback from our community sessions, along with feedback directly from trustees tonight on what we have heard through our shared work and community engagement work. In addition to that, we will review, at a later date, we'll be reviewing a needs assessment of student data for AISD guided by staff from the Council of Great City Schools, and this will include important information on the greatest areas of growth and areas of focus to ensure we are addressing our opportunity gaps and the academic needs of our students. This data will include comparisons to state and federal data where applicable and provide a better understanding of our current context. So, that's going to probably, that's going to happen in the next couple of weeks. Once these meetings are scheduled and confirmed, we will have more information on the board website, including a new agenda on boards and additional dates listed at www.austinisd.org/board/scorecard-engagement, or you could just Google "Austin ISD Scorecard Engagement," and that should get you to the right place. Also, the board was originally scheduled to hold a work session tonight to discuss scorecard constraints, but we will not hold that tonight, and that discussion will be included in a future meeting. As a reminder, our board meeting will be on a slightly different schedule than normal next month. Our board information session will actually be held a week from today, on April 4th, 2024, so please tune in for continued discussions on our scorecard development and a presentation on the district's preliminary budget. And for those of you, I was recently at a meeting, and someone was just like, "What is the scorecard exactly?" And we keep talking about the scorecard, so everybody knows what that is. And the definition I always give, it's like a short list of metrics that we use to hold ourselves and the superintendent accountable. A lot of that is around student performance goals. A lot of that is on other, other items which we call constraints, which are really kind of like our values, like our climate and culture and that type of thing. But you'll be hearing more about that as we continue our transparent process of developing that. So, next is, the next item is committee reports. We have posted the written committee report as an attachment to this item on our Board Docs Agenda, and if you don't know what Board Docs is, please, you can just Google "Austin ISD and Board Docs," B-O-A-R-D-D-O-C-S, and that will get you to the right place. And this includes a committee report on the Austin Education Fund. So, our next item is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, President Singh, members of the board. We have a presentation to take you all through the superintendent's report. So, you're in a treat tonight because there are many amazing things happening across our entire district, from academics to performances to athletics. Our students are so talented, and they're continuing to make all of us AISD proud. So, first off, congratulations to McCallum High School Senior Alice Scott, who was named Texas Journalist of the Year by the Texas Association of Journalism Educators. Pretty, that's pretty incredible, y'all.[314.44][314.44][applause] So, Alice is the co-editor-in-chief of the school's newspaper, The Shield. She has also been published in the Austin American Statesman, PBS NewsHour, and the On Our Minds podcast, all while finishing high school. Alice will represent Texas and vie for the title of National Journalist of the Year in April at the nation's largest gathering of scholastic journalists. Congratulations to the Gus Garcia Young Men's Leadership Academy Seventh and Eighth Grade Boys Basketball Team for winning its own championship. This is the seventh time our eighth grade basketball team has won this title, and the ninth time for the seventh graders' basketball team. Congratulations to them.[358.91][358.91][applause] The O. Henry Middle School Symphonic Band earned top scores across the board at the latest UIL competition. Congratulations to these incredible student musicians.[374.75][374.75][applause] Our Ann Richard Stars are shining on the national stage during SouthBySouthwest.edu. Students from Ann Richard School for Young Women Leaders presented in a session on problem-solving, student voice, and a culture of leadership. I know I surely wasn't facilitating these types of, of events during SouthBySouthwest at their age, so just so incredible. And you can see Presidents, sorry, Trustee Kaufman and Trustee Hunter there supporting everybody along the way. So, thank you, trustees, for supporting our stars. Next, Burnett's Seventh Grade Basketball Team, led by Coach Ron Shelton, finished the regular season winning the Division II North Zone with an undefeated record of 6-0. This is the first time in 10 years that the Burnett Boys Basketball Team won their zone. The team went on to finish second in the Seventh Grade Division II Championship Tournament. In addition, Burnett's Seventh Grade Basketball Team B went on undefeated with a 5-0 record. In years past, only 55 students out of 800 made up the entire Athletics Department, both boys and girls. This year, after adding, adding different opportunities, they jumped to 160 students. That's, that's, that's pretty awesome.[451.91][451.91][applause] And, you know, looking at numbers for next year, it looks like there'll be near 300 students, 111 girls and 186 boys. So, absolutely incredible. This is just phenomenal. We know there's a strong tie between athletic participation, attendance, and school achievement. Congratulations to Burnett Middle School Leadership and the entire campus on this great achievement. Another basketball shout-out goes to, but at this middle school, their boys' basketball team achieved zone championships for the South Zone. This is a great accomplishment, and we are so proud of you. Way to go. Absolutely incredible.[491.94][491.94][applause] Congratulations to Aitkins Early College High School Senior Amadas Olivades Lopez. Ms. Olivades Lopez is one of seven recipients of an $80,000 scholarship to the University of Texas at Austin. She was surprised at the University of Texas South By Southwest EDU Showcase, where the scholarship was awarded by UT President Jay Hartzell. So, great, great opportunity.[519.04][519.04][applause] Let's give a shout-out to Gritzky Middle School Band. The Gritzky Middle School Band, Honor Band showcased their talents at the Music for All National Concert Band Festival in Indianapolis. That's a pretty big band there. [laughs] The band was chosen after a, yeah, this is a very gorgeous picture. The band was chosen after a rigorous screening process and was one of only 11 middle school bands from across the country chosen to participate. So, just what a great opportunity. Great things are also booming at McBee Elementary School. McBee Elementary School students enriched their campus and curriculum with a school garden. Thanks to the two $250 grants, the students will learn how to grow plants and participate in hands-on learning. Thank you to McBee teacher, Yaili Chapa Garcia, for securing the grant and organizing this learning experience. I love seeing those opportunities out there.[574.04][574.04][applause] Check out the great work from the artists at Langford Elementary School. Students in the Creative Learning Initiative at Langford Elementary School showcased their artwork and learning in a community showcase before spring break. Students expressed their understanding of learning in all subjects throughout art and writing. I love seeing this kind of interdisciplinary learning and action. Magic happens when you tap into our students' creativity. So, this is awesome. We always walk into our campuses, and we talk about, when you walk in and you see things like this, it really responds to the values, the things that we're trying to do as an organization. So, just absolutely excited about what they got going on over there at Langford Elementary School. Congratulations to Keeling Middle School First LEGO League Teams. The Power Hornets, the Crimson Coders, and the Keeling Cardinals competed with 36 teams in the regional competition. The Power Hornets took home the first-place Champions Award, as well as first-place Robot Performance Award. They will now advance to the state competition in Stafford, Texas. The Crimson Coders received the Breakthrough Award for the team that has made significant progress in confidence and capability in both the Innovation Project and Robot Game. The Keeling Cardinals advanced to the state competition, where they earned third place, and will compete at the World Competition, happening in April. Like, that's pretty awesome. I absolutely love that.[658.23][658.23][applause] Crockett Early College High School Cadence Amidon and Alexa Cordona earned $1,000 scholarships after competing in a welding competition at the Universal Technical Institute. Cadence and Alexa are students in the Transportation, Distribution, and Logistics Program at Target, I mean, sorry, at Crockett. So, absolutely incredible opportunity.[681.79][681.79][applause] And so, trustees, tonight I want to wrap up with a very special recognition. One of the things that, that I don't think that I've done a good job of is, you know, recognizing those who truly go above and beyond and, you know, demonstrate the values, the culture of organization, and truly put students first and staff first. And so, to take you back, on the morning of December 5th, 2023, Sergeant Val Barnes checked in with the school resource officers he supervises, which is part of his regular duties. On this particular day, Sergeant Barnes was meeting Officer Kevin Woden, the school resource officer at Northeast Early College and International High Schools. While they were meeting, unbeknownst to them, a man arrived on campus and walked through the main parking lot toward the main building. As Sergeant Barnes was driving towards the exit to continue his morning duties, the man ambushed Sergeant Barnes without provocation, firing a pistol multiple times at Sergeant Barnes from only a few feet away while Sergeant Barnes was still in his vehicle. This was a very, very, very scary moment for the entire organization. Sergeant Barnes was shot multiple times in the leg and suffered cuts to his face from shattered glass. He was able to drive away from the scene as quickly as he could. Sergeant Barnes immediately communicated over the police radio that he'd been shot. Officer Woden, hearing the gunshots and seeing the smoke in the air, immediately ran towards the parking lot while communicating over the campus radio to place the entire school on lockdown. During this day, the entire system began to respond to this incident, and as many of y'all know, it continued on throughout the day. Campus administration and staff relied on their training and responded accordingly, doing everything they could to ensure their students were safe. Sergeant Barnes was able to drive himself to an EMS station directly behind the school, and while providing updates over the police radio to the officers responding to assist. Other Austin ISD officers soon arrived and helped apply tourniquets to Sergeant Barnes's leg, stopping any potential life-threatening bleeding until EMS could transport him to the hospital. The campus was subsequently locked down for hours. We actually went through a reunification process at Delco, and, and we went through the process and were able to go through our protocols and determine that suspect was not inside, and were allowed to move through and continue on with our process. While he was shot in the leg, thankfully, Sergeant Barnes did not sustain any life-threatening injuries. Sergeant Barnes returned to full duty approximately 45 days later, though I can tell you that he was wanting to go, like, within two weeks. It was ridiculous.[849.01][849.01][laughter] We want to thank all the agencies who responded to assists, including but not limited to the Austin Police Department, Texas Department of Public Safety, Travis County Constable's Office from all five precincts, Austin Travis County EMS, Austin Fire Department, the US Marshal's Office, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, certainly our Austin Police Department. Sergeant Barnes, could I have you stand up?[871.23][871.23][applause] So, Sergeant, Sergeant Barnes, we want to thank you, and we want to share with you the sincere appreciation and gratitude for what you did that day. We want to thank you for being a hero that day and supporting our students. From myself, from our board, from our entire community, thank you, thank you, thank you. He is well-known to our community. Students love him. Staff loves him. You've done a lot for AISD, and we just want to just let you know how much we care about you, and thank you for doing what you did.[924.51][924.51][laughter][925.51][925.51][applause] Trustees, that concludes my update.
Thank you. Sergeant Barnes, thank you. Thank you, Chief Sneed, and the entire AISD police force. I think I speak on behalf of the board by saying, like, you know, our biggest priority is to make sure our students are safe, and just thank you for the tireless work that you do to make this happen. And I want to thank you, Mathias, as well, because I know that we were very well-prepared for this particular incident, and your team had just undergone some intensive training that, that came in very, very handy, and I just appreciate the foresight for, for the district and all of that. So, thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Barnes. We are very appreciative. So, next item, the next item is an update on our Intruder Detection Audits. So, Mr. Segura.
Yeah, thank you, President Singh. Tonight, we have Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer of Governmental Relations and Board Services, to provide that update.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura and Board of Trustees. In June of 2022, Governor Greg Abbott, the Texas School Safety Center at Texas State University, worked together to develop Intruder Detection Audits to detect access points and identify possible areas of improvement and security procedures in school campuses across Texas. With coordination from the Texas Education Agency and Education Service Centers across Texas, there is a goal of conducting inspections at 100% of eligible school districts, including 75% of all campuses across the state every year. An audit has four parts. An Intruder Detection Audit, that's where they try to get into a building. An Exterior Door Audit, that's where they check all the doors inside to see if they are properly locked. A Classroom Door Audit, if a district has a policy to keep classroom doors locked, although that is no longer listed as an audit finding, but it is still reported. And a Review of Weekly Audit Logs for an On-Campus Walk Through. So far this year, Austin ISD has had 87 completed door audits, which is 77% of our campuses. Since we last met, we have had 19 more campus audits, and out of that, six have had at least one finding. A copy of all of those 19 can be found in the backup under Executive Session for the Board of Trustees, and that ends my report.
All right. Thank you. Trustees, are there any questions for Dr. Reach? Okay, wonderful. Thanks, Dr. Reach. So, our next item is an update on the budget. So, Superintendent Segura.
Thank you, President Singh and members of the board. We're going to bring up a presentation, and as part of our ongoing commitment to ensure that our community, our staff, our board is, is updated about where we are in the process, we wanted to give an update of, of where we are and kind of what to expect next. And so, I'll be taking us through this, and if there are any questions or opportunities, we'll, we'll be able to discuss those with Ed, our CFO, and myself. So, as we move forward, I want to take you all to Slide 3. This is a slide that we have shared with the community, and we've shared with the board before, and I think it's important that we, we start here. Just for kind of, you know, I guess, context, one of the things I want to communicate is, is kind of the structure of this graphic. What you see in each of these columns is our, is our fund balance, and what you see in blue, or that teal color, are actuals, so years past. And we always look and talk about things in fiscal years, '27, '28, '28, '29. And just so y'all are aware, the, the ending year, the 2020, is the end of the June time period. So, if we talk about, you know, 2021, '22, what we're talking about is July of 2021 all the way through June of 2022. So, that encapsulates our fiscal year. As you move through the graph, you then to begin to see these gray bars. These gray bars represent our projected fund balance almost a year ago. So, before our last approval of the budget, we presented to the board where we thought our fund balance would be once we approved that budget, which was the 2023-24 fiscal year, which is the year that we're in now. And so, I think it's always important that we talk about, okay, where we thought we were going to be and where we actually are, because what we do as an organization is try to determine, you know, based on our current expenses, expenses, and any future expenses, where we think we will be in 20, you know, '23, '24, '24, '25, and '25, '26. Really, always trying to recognize that we want to provide stability, we want to make sure that we can cover our expenses, and also address any unforeseen kind of conditions that may arise. What you see in the middle of the chart, which is the bar column tied to fiscal year '22-'23, is two colors on the same graph, on the same column. And what this shows is, last year, at this time, we thought that we would end the previous fiscal year of '22-'23 with $196 million fund balance. It ultimately ended up being $288 million. And that's a good thing, right? We were able to kind of put funds in and position ourselves better moving into this coming fiscal year, which is a good thing because we did take on a deficit budget. And what you see years after, '23, '24, '24, '25, and so on, is just a recognition that we did take on a deficit budget. We have made some, some really aggressive kind of management approaches over the last year to drive that down, but it's something that doesn't go away, right? These are fixed costs that we're talking about. And so, before I leave this slide, the one thing that I do want to point out is that this trend of the bars going down from '23, '24 onward through '26, '27 have two main assumptions. The first being that we are maintaining a $30 million budget deficit, and two, that we're going to have to take $30 million in cuts just to maintain that. And the reason that's the case is because our fixed costs continue to rise, like, like we would expect at your house, right? Things are more costly now than they were a year ago, and that is certainly true of, you know, insurance. It's certainly true of, you know, utility costs, just many things that we as an organization have to manage. So, we're constantly moving up. We have to draw, kind of find those cuts, and then at that point, we can still maintain the, the budget deficit. And so, the next slide takes this exact same kind of structure. So, it's still represented the same way. We have, each column represents a, a, a fund balance, but we did two things. The first thing is, we brought in a trend line that shows what a 17.5% fund balance policy would, which would yield, right? So, kind of, we have the black line, which is a 20%, what you see in the red dash line is a 17.5%. The last time we were before the board, we had a couple of questions, and one of those questions was, hey, what would it look like if we, you know, took an adjustment on the fund balance? And so, we wanted to show the board and our community what that might look like. The other thing that we are attempting to do in this slide is to communicate that if you take that fund balance reduction, the reason you do it is because you want to take advantage of the available cash that's in that reserve, right? It's like having your savings account versus your checking account. And so, one of the things that, that we've done, and you can see that here highlighted in, in red, is that we have to kind of split the value of the 2.5% reduction in fund balance and any additional cuts so that we can consider additional cost increases, right? It wasn't necessarily realistic to assume that all additional expenses could be covered by the fund balance. Now, I'm, I'm sharing this with you. There's, there's not detail in it. Like, I don't want y'all to take away and say, well, Mathias says, you know, these assumptions in it. What we're trying to really communicate is that a reduction in fund balance helps you for a very short period of time, because what continues on are the fixed costs. And so, though we are healthier in the nearest fiscal year and out-years, the trend begins to dip pretty significantly because we had, have not, and, and this trend line had not committed to additional cuts. So, we'll continue to have this conversation, but I think it's important that we show just different ways of looking at risk and fund balance as we move forward. And so, I wanted to share this with the board, and we'll have additional conversations around these two graphics in future meetings. Moving on to the next slide, what I wanted to do also was share with you kind of where we are. We are reviewing contracts. We're reviewing fixed costs. We're really trying to identify any opportunity that exists that minimizes impact to the classroom. And we know as a large organization, we have lots of contracts, and so, we have to evaluate all of them, identify, you know, you know, what was their purpose? What is the structure of the agreement? Is it really supporting our campuses, or is it something that has just continued to roll over over time? So that when we come to you with a strategy, you can ask us those questions, and we can be, we can, we can respond about why we think this cost should be considered, and maybe why this one should not. The other thing that we've done since the last time we've met is had conversations with our financial advisors to explore different options. I'll continue to provide updates to our principals. We have principal meetings every, every month, sometimes twice a month, depending on the, the month itself. But each and every time I get in front of our principals, I, I give them an update so they understand where we are and can ask questions of the administration, of myself specifically. We provided an update, an update to APSA, as well as we were able to get in front of the Education Austin Board, just to provide an overview of, of kind of where we are in the process. So, each and every time we come back, we'll share with you kind of other conversations we've had, other inputs, and then, you know, be able to provide, you know, different strategies moving forward. So, another way to look at this, if you move on to the next slide, is other direct costs, right? So, we think about the $30 million reduction that we have to do to still maintain the $30 million deficit, right? Because those are the fixed costs that have increased over the course of the last year, and will continue to increase every year. So, another way to look at it is our other direct costs have to be reduced, as well as any staffing efficiencies and cuts, and those two have to equal $30 million at a minimum, right? Any additional expense will be on top of the $30 million cut. And so, we have this graphic here. People, I will often say ODCs, but, but I'm trying not to. What I really want to say is other direct costs, those things that are not staff, right? You know, it could be an agreement. It could be something, you know, hardened. It could be equipment. It could be anything, really, that, so we look at all of those things, and we are going through a process of identifying recommendations as a leadership team. I will tell you that one of the things we're mindful of is, you know, any conversation exploring potential reduction does have a response to it. And so, we're trying to be very mindful about taking things to the board, as well as to our community and to staff at the appropriate time, because we recognize any anchoring, one way or the other, could potentially position us to have to do something. And, and we really want to make sure that the board and the administration are totally aligned before we agree to, to any change. The vacancies and cuts, you know, I don't want to kind of hide around the fact that there is not an, an avenue to get to a $30 million reduction without looking at some cuts locally within central administration. So, we are exploring different things. One of the things you've heard me say in the past is, you know, whatever the obligation is or the responsibility is of that position or, you know, combination of position and a department, we need to understand what role that has in the system and what impact it has in the classroom. And we recognize in years past, there've been some adjustments, and we really didn't understand kind of what that would mean until it was way too late. So, we are going through that process now, and my hope is that in your future, perhaps as early as the fourth, we can come back to you all with some more detail around that. As we move to the next slide, one of the simplest ways that I think we can talk about this is almost like a balanced equation, right? So, we have $30 million fixed costs that have increased. We have any potential conversations around compensation and additional staffing. Like, those are all costs that we have to consider, and then all reductions have to be offset by reducing other direct costs or staffing efficiencies. The one thing that I, I do want to point out is, any additional revenue does help kind of offset this, right? So, you can kind of look at that as a balanced equation. So, if additional revenue is identified, whether it's something we can do locally or even exploring a tax rate election, you know, all of these things kind of help. But the one thing I do want to point out as we move to the next slide is- But the one thing I do want to point out as we move to the next slide is that, A, this is happening all across the state. You know, I think last time I presented this slide, there was maybe eight or nine different points on here. Now it's getting to the point where we can't even fit them. I mean, every school district is really kind of struggling to get through this similar conversation. There was a recent TASBO survey on budget reductions, and I think some of the points here are worth sharing just so that, you know, the board has it and our community has it. I'm going to read them because I think they're powerful. A third of districts reported deficit budgets in 2223. More than half of the school districts reported deficits in 2324. So for us, it was 2324, but some school districts even did it prior. 50% of districts anticipate budget cuts and using fund balance this coming year. 16% of districts anticipate budget cuts with no use of fund balance, which is a very small amount, think about it. 43% of districts anticipate significant budget cuts. That's kind of reflected in the previous slide. 51% of districts planning for salary increases but will fund out of other cuts, which is kind of pretty familiar, right? We just kind of talked about that balanced equation. And then 33% of districts planning not to pay for any compensation increase. You know, we recognize here in Austin that it is very, very costly. We made some investments last year and will continue to support things that allow those who serve our students to be able to have a chance of living in the community they serve. But it's the reality that we were in. Some of the cuts that are also, that were also gathered as part of the survey, eliminating blocks, scheduling, elimination of certain salary stipends, reductions in central office staffing, and then reductions in campus level staffing. So again, these are not AISDs. These are just ones that we received from TASBO and wanted to share those with our community, with our staff, and certainly with the board. And so as we move forward, you know, we do have a budget timeline that was presented to the board. We, I think, recognize that we're probably going to have to have additional conversations along the way to get this right, as right as it can be, I guess. We are looking at the preliminary budget presented as, next Thursday. I think historically, that has been a different conversation where it was kind of higher level and we had big line items and the definition was there, but we weren't looking at cuts the same way we are now. And so one of the things that I'm going to be proposing is having a work session on the fourth after we have the budget presentation to really kind of get into the, a little bit more detail around some of the potential cost reduction strategies or cuts and also explore any potential ads and just have that conversation frankly with the board. The other thing I want to point out is that this is a moving target in some ways during this period of time. On April 11th, we'll actually get our Travis County Appraisal District preliminary property values. And so that is a huge component of the analysis that Ed and the financial advisors do. And so as we get more certainty, that allows us to be, you know, kind of more, have a clearer path for how to get to where we need to be. We have the draft budget presented on May 9th, proposed budget June 16th, and then the public hearing on the 20th. One of the things that's also important to note is that July 25th, which is 25 days after the budget is required by law to be approved, the final certified property values are made public. And then in August, we actually adopt the tax rate. So there's a lot of things that we have to, you know, kind of put assumptions on, whether it's property growth rates or just vacancy rates. All of these things are moving targets, I should say, but we have a good understanding of how much they can move. But because we are being so intentional, any minor change has a significant impact because of how detailed we are in looking at any reduction. So I think there's an opportunity for upcoming work sessions, one as early as the fourth. We'll have a conversation at the time around the structure of any compensation and what that may or may not look like, and then revenue generation strategy. I think all of those kind of have to be together. My fear is that when one kind of grows legs and kind of is discussed separately from the other two because any compensation kind of forces the cut. And so I want to make sure that we continue to talk about all of them together. So I want, I'm going to pause there. I know that we'll have a, you know, more in-depth conversation on the fourth, but wanted to provide our community, our staff, and certainly the board with an update of where we are. So I'll pause there and happy to take any questions.
Trustees, any questions?
I just have two quick questions. One is, can we please put this PowerPoint in the, onto, into board docs? So our community has access. There's so much good information in it, and I think it would be helpful as we, you know, have this conversation together to do that. And then the second thing, as we put our toe, you know, a bit deeper into the water every time we talk into really thinking about a possible tax rate election and maybe accessing, inviting our community to access this golden penny, the copper pennies with us if they're interested. It might be useful to get Amanda Bronson or someone from TASBO to come and just give us a 15-minute for the board and the community about what that is. Texas school finance is so complicated, and I think we have a handful of really good translators in our community who might be really valuable to come and just explain to everyone what that is and what it means. Thank you.
So trustee Boswell, I think one clarification would be, I think, would you want to have that conversation as early as the fourth? I guess the reason I ask is because revenue generation is something that I think has to be explored. So depending on availability, I think we probably need to have the starter conversation and then maybe back that up with a more in-depth conversation, but that's really going to depend on availability.
I'm flexible about the when. I don't think it's a now, now, but I think it's a really complicated topic. And having a good translator in addition to all the expertise we have here would, I think, maybe be valuable. Or maybe it would be a, it wouldn't even necessarily need to be in a board meeting. It could be a public, you know, a Zoom meeting that we invited our whole community to. I think there are ways to do it.
I'll work with Ed.
But to bring people along and help just make sure everyone really understands what we're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustees, any other questions? I have a couple of questions. One is, do you mind bringing up that beautiful slide with the, like, just the graph? It's a beautifully done slide. I think there's a lot of information packed in there.
Slide three.
Yes, perfect. Okay, so looking at this, and so the, just wanted to check my understanding. The red dotted line shows the assumptions for a 17.5% fund balance. And it's, and last time we talked about this, the administration was making a recommendation to stay at 20%. And I know the trustees were curious to see, you know, what the projection might look like with the 17.5%. So I just wanted to kind of hear from the administration again, like, what, does this change your recommendation? And also provided an opportunity for trustees to kind of weigh in as well on how they felt about reducing the fund balance if necessary? Or would you rather pursue some revenue generation? And if we were to do some, you know, do a tax rate election, how much would that change the scenario?
So this is, I think, one of the, this is a great, I love this slide, and I'm right there with you. I think it's a great way to represent a lot of different data. I think that the challenge we have is there are some assumptions on the drawdown regarding fund balance. Because you can technically reduce your policy and not take any, like, not take advantage of it, right? So you could reduce 17.5% and then still maintain a $30 million deficit while taking the $30 million cuts. I think the reason we didn't want to model that is because we recognize that, that one of the only reasons you would take it is because you want to leverage those dollars. And we do know that the 2.5% is about $20 million. And so the other assumption here is that you're going to use some of it, but not all of it, right? So if there's compensation, compensation, additional staff, plus the budget, plus the $30 million cuts, you know, some of it is going to be carried by the fund balance, some of it's going to be covered by additional cuts, which is why here in the red text, it says assume $44 million in cuts, and that still maintains a $30 million deficit. Because what's not explicit is that we're assuming you're taking advantage of leveraging the reduced fund balance. So I think for me personally, you know, just having gone through a bond sale earlier in the week and spending time with our financial advisors, I think that 17.5% does create some opportunity, but it kind of only pushes the, I don't want to say the can down the road, but it keeps us from like addressing a bigger problem soon, like sooner. Because it's going to be there in the next fiscal year, in the next fiscal year, until those fixed, until those reoccurring costs, those fixed costs really get addressed in a meaningful way or the state increases, you know, student allotment or we pursue a tax rate election. And so I think there's like this other piece of it, which is the annual costs associated with all these different moving parts. But generally speaking, I am not really excited about moving away from it if it means that we're also not going to have the harder conversation. Like, if both are occurring, then I'm okay. But I think it's really hard to just assume that that's going to help us get all the way through it.
Okay.
That makes any sense?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And then there is another slide, I think it was the next one after this. Yeah, okay, so this is really helpful to see that you all are looking through, you know, where you might make cuts. And I just wanted to call attention to that one bullet, the impact on student outcomes. All this work that we're doing is to make sure that our students are achieving at high levels academically. And so I really appreciate your calling that out on the slide. And can you tell us a little bit about the process, you know, thinking about our scorecard goals, you know, around, you know, reading by third grade, performing on a great level math by third grade, possibly looking at middle school math and all the other things that we talk about that we value? How, like, what questions is the staff asking itself? What is the approach that you're taking to actually go through and review our current investments in light of our student outcome goals?
Yeah, so the first thing I would say is that because of the number, it's difficult to get into the level of detail where we would be able to analyze all of them at the same level. So it first starts off with a conversation with those within leadership who understand what that expense is and get an information from, get information from their division as to, you know, why was it? Well, how is it used? What is it used for? In many cases, because of who's in the room, we have a pretty good understanding. But one of the things that has come up honestly is that you may have one type of expense, but it may show its way and it may show itself in eight different ways across the district. And so now you have to think about, okay, well, this contract is, or this service or this vendor or this whatever is supporting only eight schools, or this other one is supporting eight schools, or maybe this other one is, you know, they're so very different. But I think it gets to your bigger question, which is how do you determine that it's actually improving student outcomes? Some, honestly, some partnerships and some contracts, it's easier to get that. Others, it's sort of more anecdotal. And so I think that's where we're really relying on in our teams to kind of help us develop a framework for it. My hope is that anything that comes forward, we kind of have that logic all teed up and tightened. But I don't think we're at a point now, just given the number and how many variations of these things there are in the district, are we able to kind of give certainty and say, well, we know this one is slightly more impactful than this one? It's just not that simple. The other thing I would say is some of the contracts and partnerships, I think, the way the agreements were structured didn't necessarily require for that type of reporting. And so, you know, that's just, that's just kind of how it is. And so we're trying to get through all of that. The other thing is amount, right? So these are big numbers. And so we often think about, you know, does it, if there's a couple of thousand dollars here or there, you know, it would take us a very, very long time to get through those, that many to actually move the needle. So we're kind of looking at the ones that are of higher value and going down from there. But it's a lot. I'll tell you that, you know, I thought we would be maybe a little bit further along, but the challenges that we have as a team is that we go, we're spending a lot of time. The team is spending a lot of time trying to provide that detail so that we can have that conversation with you all.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the complexity too. I mean, there are things that we know matter, like school counselors, for example. But you're never going to have a study that says, you know, like, you know, having a halftime more FTE is going to increase reading scores by this much. So I appreciate that there's a lot of complexity on this and not necessarily, you know, expecting, you know, number, like a direct relationship, but just understanding like the theory of action. And, you know, understanding that some things are going to take more time to show up in student outcomes. And of course, the joy of learning, you know, this isn't just about like, you know, automatons in classrooms. But, you know, are we really addressing the whole child? Because that is, you know, one of our deep values. So I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and transparency as we move through this process. Trustees, are there any other questions or comments?
I just have one quick follow-up to that is, I know we're not here to ask for the things we want right now, but I do think in light of the fact that we're talking about data and asking these questions as an administration and a board and a community of what do the data tell us? And how do we know what's working and where our dollars go? I'm really thinking about bringing back a really robust research and evaluation program. Really appreciate that conversation as we do this. Thank you.
Ed, do you have anything to add?
So earlier you asked with regards to fund balance and kind of administration's recommendation. We do continue to feel that we need to make sure that the district is financially stable, and that's very important, especially in the out years. And so that, when you look at the fund balance graphs, that would still be our recommendation to keep fund balance at 20% just because of the impact that we see in the outer years. And also, there are so many uncertainties with the legislative session coming in January of 2025, the impact that enrollment will have in the out years for our budget and then property values. And so with so many unknowns, we feel it's important to make sure that we maintain that financial stability.
Really appreciate that and appreciate you and your team doing some amazing work. Keep those excellent graphs coming. Yes.
Not a question, more thought exercise for our families and for people who are watching. There is no rescue coming. There's no one coming to save us. It's only going to get worse. One of my hobbies is like looking, seeing what other school districts do. I know that's odd, but they are cutting so close to the bone, and we are trying to preserve as much as we can, right? So as we move through this, people are going to feel some kind of way about whatever we do, right? They're going to be all in their feelings about this or that or what have you. The point is, just real talk. Right now, we're trying to keep the lights on, and that's how hard this is going to be. It's a hard competition I have with my kids, like, can we, do you want lights or do you want McDonald's? Right? It's a little joke I tell them, if you have McDonald's money. But that's where we are right now, and there's no more. And if you read any sort of newspaper right now, we are not done with this voucher fight. And that's going to split the pie even more. So just know that what we are doing is not like, well, if we do this, this will fix that. Like our superintendent said, there's no, I mean, there's so much. And so just as we move through this process, to just know that we're fighting for public schools. I keep, literally keeping the doors open and the lights on. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hunter. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the hard work of the team. So now we will move on to the next item, which I think is a little bit more fun, a little bit more fun. We need that. It's the summary of the community feedback and scorecard development. So I believe Ashley Paz, our score, our Lone Star Governance Coach, might be joining us via Zoom as a resource. I don't, I don't think Ashley is presenting today, but appreciate her being here and always being so accessible to us. I would also like to thank all the trustees for taking part in these community engagement outreach sessions and thank every single student, staff, and family member, community members as well who are able to come out to our events and share your lived experience and issues that are important to our students. I want to give a special shout out to Secretary Boswell, trustee Gonzalez, and trustee Zapata for working with the stash, staff and with Ashley Paz on preparation for the engagement. That was a really, really heavy lift, and you guys did a great job. So at this point, I would like to ask if secretary Boswell can share a report on the work?
Yes, happy to share a report. And I'm going to do a quick overview and then invite us to have a short conversation. and then invite us to have a short conversation as well. So the Board of Trustees led a month-long process of two-way engagement with the Austin ISD community from mid-February through mid-March. Through this process, our goal was to ensure that we have a complex understanding of our community's vision for improving student outcomes and of our collective values that need to be protected as we work toward those goals. We had twenty scheduled listening sessions. Some were in person and some were virtually. We had almost four hundred people attend our in-person sessions, and we didn't capture an official headcount for our virtual sessions, but the estimate is about two hundred and fifty people. And then we also had an online option through Thought Exchange. We had nine hundred four participants in that. So the goal was to engage with a diverse cross-section of our community and to get as much information as we could. So really want to thank everyone who participated in those sessions. Want to let people know, as Trustee Singh said earlier, as President Singh said earlier, we will have ongoing opportunities for people to engage with this process as we start drafting a scorecard and it starts coming into focus. And we really want to hear from the community as that process goes on. Are we translating what we heard? Do you, do you think we're translating that to our scorecard in ways that honor what we were told during that process? Also want to let you know that the Thought Exchange responses, verbatim from our community, are included in board docs as part of this agenda item, if you want to go read through all those those responses. So we'll talk a little bit about preliminary results. But before we get to that, I'd like to open the floor to everybody here to share just what you heard when you were out in the community, what people shared, what themes you may have heard from people, and and what did people have to say that were, were, that stood out? And I want to share, before we do that, what the five questions were asked and that were asked in those sessions were. The first is, how should we be able to describe a graduate of Austin ISD? Second was, what does students need to know or be able to do during their time in Austin ISD? Third question, what does educational equity mean to you? And how will we know if it's happening? The fourth is, what should Austin ISD not do or stop doing as we pursue improved outcomes for students? And that really is looking toward values that we protect, that question. And then the final one is, what do you think is currently going well in Austin ISD? And so I'd love to hear from my colleagues about what you heard from the community as you were out listening.
Yeah, I, I really enjoy these sessions because we just have so many people in our community that care about our kids so much. And I know it was really hard for people to come to this. So we had teachers on their lunch breaks coming in, and parents were like, well, you know, I have a PTA meeting tonight, but I want to make sure I go to this because this is so important between my jobs. And I was just so thankful for that. And we really learned that they just have such high aspirations for our students that are beyond any of these, of measures that are going to show up on a scorecard. And so really thinking how we can reflect those values and making sure we're giving our kids and our community everything they deserve.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll share. I like this little switcheroo. It's nice. So I heard, again, echoing what Trustee Whitlich who said, that people gave up their time to share, and and that's really meaningful. One of the things I heard a lot was they want our graduates to have a clear plan on what they want to do for college and career. I heard that over and over again. A lot of times, families expressed that they did not always know what, how to even come up with that, how to even approach that. And so thinking about ways to, you know, how that might show up as we plan our scorecard will be really an exciting thing that I would be looking forward to. I got to give a shout out to report cards. One person actually said, my favorite thing is, what happened to the report cards? And I did not plant that person in the audience, but I, I'm always concerned with with parents knowing how their own child is doing academically so they can support them. But I I did hear that in different ways from different people. Another thing that was really, and I kind of mentioned it a few minutes ago, but as, as people go through our system, they want the children to love school, you know? I think every parent wants that for their kiddo, and our teachers do too, and the kids want that. So I think that's definitely something that that I heard loud and clear as well. I would say those are the, some of the top takeaways for me. There's a lot more, but that's what's top of mind for me right now.
Sorry, I thought we were going down the line. But I was confused.
Free for all.
Oh, okay.
Anyone, anytime.
Ah, I want to say I I had the opportunity to go to the engagement sessions that we had planned, but I was also able to push into meetings that were happening on campuses already, whether it was CACs or PTAs. What I can remember a lot all throughout, elementary conversations and secondary conversations, was mental health in relation to the constraint. And also, just, I guess, a confusion about what the constraints signified and what they could look like, and a lot of wheels spinning once we got clarity about what the possibilities could be for constraints. So I know that this is a process that we're going to go through, like, you know, repeatedly, cyclically, every once in a while. So I'm interested to do it differently next time in certain ways, based on what the experience was this time. But in any event, it was still nice to hear how passionate people were and really, really ready to align all of that passion for better outcomes for our kids. That's it.
I found instructive. I think it's question number four. What should AISD stop doing? Or what's what, I can't remember the question exactly.
Do differently.
Do differently? Yeah, I think that, like, the other questions were like pulling hands teeth, but really got some good feedback on that question. And I think that's going to be helpful for the administration and for the board. I think that's the question that really gets at people's values, like what they really want, right? People don't always tell you what you should do, right? Because they don't, they don't really know, but they know what they don't want to see. And I think that was helpful.
Anyone else? And and I would just echo the passion that our community has. People show up because people really, really care. And they care about our students, and they care about the educators who support our students, and they care about our district. And I think people have big faith that, you know, people have eyes wide open about what we're doing well and what we're not, but also big faith that we can address some of the things and and really be even better than we are. And that's exciting. It's exciting to tap into that. And I think just the expertise that our families have. Our families are experts in what they want in our schools and what we want for our kids. And and we need to honor that every day on every campus and and the board as well. So really appreciate everyone who showed up to share what matters to them.
All right, thank you, Secretary Boswell. Appreciate that. So we will move on now to public testimony for items on the consent agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have two people who signed up to speak in person, and we have one who left a recorded message. Thank y'all for your patience. We will now move to the in-person testimony. So in order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible, each speaker will be allotted one minute. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. When you come to the microphone, there will be a device that lights up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. And when the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. So our in-person speakers tonight are Louis Malfarro and Gabriel Estrada. So hello. And so we'll first start with Mr. Malfarro.
I'm the Associate Executive Director at Austin Voices for Education and Youth. You're going to be looking tonight at your dual credit and and early college work, and I wanted to report to you on some of the work that we are doing in this area. Thank you to the superintendent and those trustees that joined us for our Stand Up for Schools event earlier this month, where we really got to showcase some of the great work we're doing in secondary schools. This past Saturday, Austin Voices and Webb Middle School hosted our Ninth Annual Encore Student and Parent Conference. Encore stands for Engaging Our Community for College Readiness. Ever since we started working with then Reagan, now Northeast, to become the first school in the district to have early college, we have been working to engage parents and students in these powerful programs. And the scholars that came and spoke at the Encore event, three graduating seniors from Navarro and and four sophomores from Northeast, all talked about how important the programs are, the support they get from parents, from educators, and from programs like Gear Up and Avid. Austin Voices is laying a foundation for continuing to do this work, and we look forward to continuing to partner with the district as you seek to boost the number of students that are taking advantage of these great programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gabriel Estrada.
Can you hear me? All right. Good evening, thanks, y'all. First of all, the work that you do, fantastic, every single day. And I just want to reiterate what what Louis has just said, the work that we're all trying to do is partner with AISD. And some of the things we want to invite you to, coming up next, next Saturday, April sixth, STEAM Festival at Martin Middle School, it's our eighth annual. We're celebrating the Eastside Vertical Team. We're celebrating bringing in folks who who want to partner with these students and look at the great things that are happening there. We also want to invite you to Kids Fest and our St. John Unity Fest as well as St. John Neighborhood Unity Walk on April twentieth. Invite you as well, another great opportunity to celebrate our schools and celebrate the community. We'll feature Job Fair with support from Workforce Solutions, Goodwill, and Capital Idea, as well as the College and Career Zone, and showcase the programs at Northeast Early College High School and partnerships with ACC. We have Burnett Fiesta on April twenty seventh, and then May first. I just want to point this out, we're having a little collaboration with our our grant that we have with the Community Schools Grant. Wonderful opportunity to look at what's going on. We're trying to build a mariachi group and coordinating with the University of Incarnate Word in in San Antonio, where I should go to take students down there. So great things happening. Let's make AISD great.
All right, thank you so much. So we will now play the recorded message for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Good evening, trustees. My name is London Chamberlain, and I'm a community member and frequent volunteer at Eastside Early College High School. Today, I'm addressing Agenda Item Seven, Student Achievement and Scorecard Goals. Recently, while talking to a student at Eastside, they mentioned they're enrolled in an engineering class that does not have a teacher. The student told me that they have a permanent substitute, but that they do not learn anything about engineering, and the class is treated as a study hall period. My questions for you are, is it standard practice in Austin ISD to allow students to register for courses that the district doesn't have teachers to fill? If this is not standard practice, what will AISD do to remedy this situation to ensure that this class gets a teacher? Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, so this concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? I would be curious about that last caller, Mr. Segura. If you, I don't know if you have an answer now, but I would be curious to know what the process is if we don't have a teacher to teach a particular course.
Well, so if, I can follow up specifically about this. I mean, generally, I don't know if you want me to get into.
You know.
Okay, so, but generally speaking, I can, I can get into, provide a detail on this specific call, Prинль Вейли, with Trust, Randy Hosek.
Okay. I appreciate that, thank you. All right, so thank you, trustees. And as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. All right, so now we are on to our student achievement and scorecard goals. Our, so that this is part of our commitment to discuss student achievement, and we have a presentation on Goal Progress Measures three point two through three point four. This is related to college career readiness. And before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So does anyone have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay, so, great. So if, at this time, since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will turn the floor to Superintendent Segura for the presentation.
All right, thank you, President Singh. The team now will present on the scorecard Goal Progress Measure three point two, dual credit, Goal Progress Measure three point three, industry-based certifications, and Goal Progress Measure three point four, AP and IB course completion. I have joining me Ms. Patty Rodriguez, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Leading, Dr. Angel Wilson, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, Dr. Fannin, Executive Director of Early College High School in PTEC, Tammy Caesar, Director of Career and and Technical Education, and Dr. Elizabeth Severance, Director of Advanced Academics. And so we have a presentation that we'll be pulling up. And as we move on to Slide two, one of the things that I want to point out to our community and certainly to our board is that this was a kind of two-pronged presentation. If you recall, a couple weeks ago, we came before you and presented around this goal, but focused on Goal Progress Measure three point one. This is specifically around three point two, three point three, and three point four. The goal itself, just so everybody's clear, is is an aggregate score. And so the percent of graduates that meet the TSI criteria on the TSI II, ACT, SAT, and either earn an IBC Level One certificate, Level Two certificate, or earn an associate's degree will increase from seven point five percent in August of 2021 to ten percent in August of 2026. And so there's an asterisk there because we want to be very clear that this is an aggregate number, aggregate percent. We are in the retooled scorecard kind of era at the moment. We are working through and developing a new scorecard. And so that will be the one that we use moving forward after June. Specifically, Goal Progress Measures three point two, three point three, and three point four, these are also aggregate scores for for just total awareness. You know, historically, we've used, identified different student groups in these categories. We certainly recognize that moving forward, we have some flexibility as long as these represent or indicators or predictors of the goal itself moving. And so just want to make sure that that's, that's clear, and we'll certainly reference that along the presentation. Though, in the backup and in the materials themselves, all student groups, at least as defined in our scorecard, are present. So specifically, Goal Progress Measure three point two, students who are on track to earn at least twelve college hours will increase from nine point eight percent in August of 2021 to twenty-five percent by August of 2026. Goal Progress Measure three point three, students who are on track to earn an industry-based certification from TEA approval list will increase from sixteen point seven in August of 2021 to twenty percent by August of 2026. And then lastly, Goal Progress Measure three point four, students on track to pass at least one AP or IB class will increase from thirty-eight point one percent in August of 2021 to sixty percent by August of 2026. So we do have a a team here because it, these are kind of a variety of different things that we're tracking. So we look forward to the conversation, and with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Fannin.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. So tonight, our college and career readiness framework here, it's really centered around the success that we have in workforce, in military, and in post-secondary readiness throughout our CCMR accountability indicators. So in this particular framework, we're really engaging our students in learning more about dual credit, learning more about AP and IB, as well as their industry-based certifications, and just earning their high school diplomas and a post-secondary credential. The research here, one thing that we wanted to share is from the Fordham Institute. It shares that our students who earn an industry-recognized certification, they tend to have somewhat better work and college outcomes, including higher employment rates and higher rates of college enrollment and persistence. And this additional research that we share here with you from Schu, Solanki, and Fink, it actually focuses in on the benefits of both AP and dual credit. Their work highlights benefits of both types of those programs, including reducing the cost and the time that it takes to receive a post-secondary degree, better preparing our students for college coursework, and it eases our students' transition, that transition that we have from high school where we have them to college. So this next slide, we're really going to focus in on the first two columns that you see. Those three categories share information about students earning their CCMR accountability, both in either college-ready, career-ready, or military-ready. But tonight, we're going to talk about the first two columns. But tonight, we're going to talk about the first two columns with college-ready and career-ready. And have a little bit of information for you about dual credit, AP, IB indicators, and those industry-based certifications that you see in column 2. So, our GPM 3.2, it measures our students who are on track to earn at least 12 college hours. That will increase from 9.8% in August 2021 to 25% in August 2026. So, here's what we want to frame here in this slide for you. When we talk about our students to be on track and earning at least 12 dual-credit hours, we really have to break that down into grade levels. We talk about our ninth graders, who should be earning at least three hours; our 10th graders, who should be earning at least six hours; 11th graders should be earning at least nine hours or more; and our 12th graders should be earning at least 12 hours or more of those college credits. So, what you see here on this slide is that our dual-credit attainment for our students, that middle column that's highlighted for you, we're at 8.4%. They show us that overall in our district, they're earning at least 12 college hours. And we expect to meet that target goal of 10% for all of our students by the end of the summer 2024. And so, that's because the data that you see here, it's actually calculated through the end of the fall semester. So, we still have our spring semester students that are currently enrolled, and we have summer 1 and summer 2 that is not shown here in this column that's highlighted for you. So, that same trend, it's happening for our economically disadvantaged students at 7% that you'll see here, and our Hispanic economically disadvantaged students at 7.1% to meet that 10% target goal. And so, that's what we wanted to highlight on this slide for you. We see that in the pink color, there's still some more work to do for those student groups and specializing in making sure that we're putting in those strategies to help those student groups be successful and get closer to our goal. And so, Ms. Caesar is going to share some more information about the CTE indicators and some more information about earning our industry-based certifications.
Thank you, Dr. Fannin. Before we go into the data, I want to take time to explain the CTE indicators connected to the IBCs or industry-based certification. These indicators are defined by TEA and reflect the student's status in their aligned CTE program of study. As you can see on the slide, a CTE participant is a student who has completed one or more CTE courses for less than two credits. A CTE concentrator is a student who has completed and passed two or more CTE courses in the same program of study. A CTE completer is a student who has completed and passed three or more CTE courses for four credits within the same program of study. For example, a student completing a health science program of study would take Principles of Health Science in Level 1, Medical Terminology, Level 2, Health Science Theory, Level 3, and Practicum in Health Science in Level 4. The student would earn the IBC in the practicum course. Next slide. GPM 3.3, Students Who Are On Track to Earn an Industry-Based Certification From the TEA Approval List will increase from 16.7 in August 2021 to 20% by August 2026. Students who earn an industry-based certification, we call them IBCs, so, excuse me, I'll go to IBCs, are normally reported to us by TEA as lagged data and not in real time. For example, certifications earned freshman year would show up five years later. In order to establish a leading indicator for GPM 3.3 for the current year, we chose to use the percentage of students in Grade 11 and 12 who are identified as being on track to achieve the status of CTE completer. This chart shows the percentage of CTE completers who were reported through PMS as CTE completers in school year 2020, '21 through '22, '23, as defined by TEA, and the percentage considered on track for school year 2023 to '24. The highlighted data represent students currently enrolled in advanced CTE courses who will become CTE completers upon completion of the course. Currently, 13.5% of our students are enrolled in an advanced CTE course, which is 2.5 percentage points away from this year's goal of 16%. We're happy to report higher rates of our students who are identified as economically disadvantaged. Our data is currently showing 14.7% of our economically disadvantaged students are on track to become a CTE completer, which is only 1.3 percentage points away from our goal of 16%. It's important to note that program completion is an indicator within the accountability system. Prior to this year, an IBC could be offered in any course for TEA accountability purpose. Now, students must earn an IBC and also completing the aligned program of study to count. In addition, the certifications are more rigorous, and they're driven by high-wage, high-demand jobs. Therefore, we are not on track to meet our goal for all students, but we are showing positive trends in the following student groups: students identified as Hispanic economically disadvantaged and students receiving special education services. It is possible that the percentages reported tonight could increase if students earn course credits based on year-long averaging at the end of the year. Now, Dr. Sev is going to discuss the impact of advanced academics.
Thank you, Tammy. So, Goal Progress 3.4, as mentioned before, has changed, like the other goals. So, this measures students who are on track to pass at least one Advanced Placement AP or International Back-Lawiate IB course from 38.1% in August 2021 to 60% by August 2026. The preliminary data shown here includes students who have successfully completed an AP or IB course at any point during their high school years and/or passed an AP course in the fall of 2023, thus being on track to complete an AP or IB course this year. Our preliminary data show that for AP/IB course completion for all students is 42.3%. For students identified as economically disadvantaged, our preliminary data is 30.5%. While we are showing positive trends of meeting Goal 3.4 for multiple student groups, we know there is still work to do to close the opportunity gaps for all students and student groups. While this percentage may go up at the end of the spring semester, we do not anticipate significant increases. Next slide. So, as Superintendent Segura mentioned at the beginning, we have multiple people presenting because we have multiple departments represented. And so, we work together to come up with four root causes to try to span across GPMs 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4. I'm going to talk to you about them today. So, the first one that we discussed is misalignment. This is related to, similarly, an example is when Tammy was talking about the CTE and the certifications before the IBCs were more accessible because it wasn't tied to a program of study. So, based on the new changes from TEA, some of the IBCs are no longer being offered or they're not tied to a specific program of study. So, we are more constrained, and we are working to make sure that we are in better alignment with our campuses and our counselors and our staff to ensure that students are staying in their CTE pathway to ensure that they become a completer and be eligible to earn the IBC. The second root cause has also been discussed before at the March 7th meeting and is related to CCMR case management. Austin ISD does not currently have a comprehensive student-level management platform to assist campus leaders, district leaders, and staff to develop student-level action plans for CCMR accountability and post-secondary. Thirdly, is student and family engagement. While we are communicating information to families and students, we know that there are more opportunities to have more authentic two-way communication and engagement throughout their K-12 journey. We know that just because we have shared the information, that does not mean the information has been received, and we have more work to do. Lastly, the root cause we're going to talk about tonight is related to course decisions. This refers to students and families understanding the impact of how course choices that they make at younger ages and younger grades could impact future pathway opportunities. For example, a student staying in a CTE pathway to become a completer, or a student, a fifth-grade student choosing accelerated math for sixth grade to become on the algebra pathway, having them be better set up for success in whether early college high school or AP courses. We need to deepen our support in helping students and families and stakeholders learn and understand about the benefits associated with these different course options and pathways. With that, I will now turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Patricia Rodriguez to talk about strategies.
Thank you. So, Teaching, Learning, and Leading has identified four strategies to address our root causes. And when we look at that last icon, it talks about a seamless pathway, and that truly is what our ultimate goal is. We understand that with seamless pathways, our students really have those positive opportunities for their future. So, this year, through professional development and through collaboration with our teachers, our counselors, and district-level leaders, we've really started to norm our expectations because we knew that that's where we needed to start. And we also had to better understand how the choices we make, both at the campus level and also at the district level, truly impacts the implementation of our programs. So, a really good example of that work was with our universal choice sheets. We recognized, we revamped, because we knew that we were not providing equitable choices and opportunities across the district, and that was not a practice that we knew that was good for kids. So, we changed it. We also know that there's a lot of work still to be done with our master schedules. We always want to ensure and encourage our students to pick programs and activities that they're really excited about, but we also don't want them to have to abandon a pathway because it's blocked into a specific schedule. So, we will continue to work with our campuses to help them and support them to ensure that they truly are serving their school community and the individual needs of all of our students. So, team collaboration has been a really positive result with the reorganization within Teaching, Learning, and Leading. So, our departments have truly established a collaborative partnership within the organization. So, what does that look like? It looks like CTE, CCMR, Advanced Academic, School Leadership, all coming together to share their practices and the systems that they are implementing across the campus, which means we're not working in isolation, which was a past practice. And we also understand, within the sharing of this information, there is not one program that is competing over another program. Instead, we have a common goal to bring to our students a seamless pathways and also to make sure that they are getting the utmost opportunities and choices in order for them to be successful. Also, in our collaborations, we've really kind of like had deep discussions about what are some potential barriers. And so, we do recognize that there have been some biases and some misconceptions. This has helped us to have crucial conversations and also support our campuses because we don't want any of our stakeholders to unintentionally serve as gatekeepers of our pathways for our students or for their opportunities. And so, I know we've mentioned this before. And so, we've discussed the real urgency of having a reliable case management platform. And that platform would truly serve as a preventative measure because it allows our leaders and our campuses to look at real-time data and respond as such in real time and provide that individual support. So, in collaboration with technology and Chief Oscar Rodriguez, we've already started those initial discussions and planning so that we can have a successful launch of our platform in August. So, as soon as we begin our new school year. And so, lastly, I do want to talk about the information that we provide to our communities and to our families. We recognize that that is a partnership that we have to continue, but it's not just about providing information, looking at a video, looking at a pamphlet of choices, right? It's really creating those partnerships with students and giving them the information so that they truly understand about those experiences and the choices that they're about to choose. We also recognize that there's work to do because we don't want to just provide this communication in our secondary campuses. It truly has to be a K through 12 effort. So, evidence of some of this work has been the team coming together and collaborating to provide advanced opportunity nights for our families. And this truly was an event in a space for our families to deeply understand the advanced academic choices and opportunities that our students have. And so, on the next slide, you're going to see some highlights of some specific strategies in partnership with secondary school leadership led by Dr. Wilson. So, I'll hand it to her.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. So, you will notice some overlap in strategies on this slide that we presented on in March 7th because our CTE, CCMR, Advanced Academics, and School Leadership teams are closely aligned in this collaborative work together. For the sake of time, what I will do is highlight those strategies that are specific to the board goals that we are presenting tonight. We, as a secondary school leadership team, have worked to intentionally design, refine, and monitor programs and systems to grow the number of scholars who increase their dual-credit attainment, their industry-based certifications, and complete at least one AP or IB course. In column 1, in the design stage, what you'll see is that aside from our principal meeting learning cadences, we also are meeting and collaborating together in special learning sequences as teams for CCMR, CTE, Secondary School Leadership, Advanced Academics, and also our campus leadership teams and teachers on campuses. And we are taking advantage of every opportunity to expand our learning and to expand our mindsets and growths through targeted professional development that equips us to support the work. We talked about future ready grads on March 7th as it relates to CCMR, CTE, and School Leadership collaboration. What we want to talk about tonight is the partnership that will expand to include our counseling and Advanced Academics teams. As counselors play a significant role in advising our students, and you'll hear about that as we continue this presentation. In column 2, in the refine stage, we tweaked many of our processes this school year to prioritize student and campus needs as a system of schools and also individually for deeper levels of coaching and support with our schools. With new requirements, as shared with you from TEA for CTE programs of study and pathways, there is opportunity to better align our course offerings in support of students. We are also standardizing systems across campuses to ensure that students are supported, advised, and encouraged to not only start but complete pathways, whether that be in CTE, whether it be ACC, or Advanced Academics. And then, lastly, in our monitoring stage, progress monitoring is key as it signals to us when to make adjustments and when to maintain. We track key data points in order to identify gaps in opportunity and access, and then, we respond to what we are seeing in the data through need-specific strategies. We progress monitor weekly in our collaborative meeting structure, and then, we cascade this information to the campus level with our campus leaders in very strategic ways. We also analyze the data for outliers and areas of strength so that we can replicate what we are seeing on campuses across classrooms. And then, we work together to try to build stronger school-community partnerships because we know that this partnership is critical to the success of our students in preparing them to be college, career-ready, and beyond. So, this concludes our presentation on Goal Progress Measures 3.2, Dual-Credit Attainment; 3.3, Industry-Based Certification; and 3.4, AP/IB Course Completion. We will continue the work in providing access and opportunities for our scholars to be college, career, and military-ready by refining our systems to ensure that we are sustaining this goal for all students. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Superintendent and to the team. Excellent presentation. So, we will now open the floor for our monitoring conversation. As a reminder, we have asked questions that are of a technical or tactical nature before tonight's meetings, and you can find those questions and their answers on board docs with our agenda materials. Our questions during the meeting tonight, though, will be more of a strategic nature, meaning we will ask questions to help us understand how the reality for our students is aligning with the vision. You'll remember, I think every trustee should have this little purple sheet or a little guide from Lone Star Governance to help as well. And the other thing I wanted to mention is it's helpful if every trustee does provide some sort of comment or question, but if somebody else has already covered your question, you know, you don't have to invent something if it's already been addressed. But I really, I know I've got lots of questions. So, I, which side of the room? Let's start on my left with trustee Wili Chu, if you're ready.
Thank you so much. I wanted to know, where do you feel like our current strengths are that can be built upon with our CCMR data?
So, one thing that I'd like to share is that we currently are in a grant cycle with TEA. We have four wonderful, amazing teachers that are embarking upon their master's degree with the grant that we received. So, I feel like that's going to be a great strength for us, especially for dual-credit and working with our AP students and IB students as well. Those four teachers are engaging upon that master's degree so that they will be able to help give us a heavy lift. with entering into that dual credit on our particular campuses. So I think that's going to really open some doors, open up some master scheduling for us so that our students will be able to take those dual credit courses on their campuses. So they'll be able to teach the English 1301, English 1302 classes and so forth through ACC, but being a professor on our campus. So I think that's a strength.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think one thing that we talked about, that thing is interesting, it's the kind of collaboration that occurs, you know, between our principals and between our staff. And one of the things that we were talking about earlier today was in the past, we've heard about, you know, paying for the AP tests can sometimes be a barrier. And so what I've, what I've come to understand and what we've heard in the past is, you know, sometimes it's a limiting factor. So what I've really appreciated is the ability for principals to share kind of how they're actually creating the environment for our students to have those opportunities at their own campus. Now, what we've seen is some, you know, principals are leveraging different resources to help offset those costs. But what we know is never want to be a barrier for those that can't afford it. So I think that is a kind of a strength and an opportunity because what we're trying to do is figure out, you know, how is it, where is it working well? And then how can we leverage that to apply it across the system? But really learning from each other, I think, has helped, and we have seen an uptick in that regard as well.
All right, trustee Boswell.
Thank you all for all of this. It's an exciting, rich bunch of information. I have a question about all three things we're talking about, the CTE, the AP and IB, and the dual credit. And so many of these are multi-year pathways by design, and that's the power that they have. And we know that the students who are in our high schools now have been disrupted on that path by COVID in so many ways. And I know you've shared with us in the past that that's part of what we're seeing in the data, the dips. And I'm wondering what patterns you're seeing if students, you know, kind of when you expect that to kind of normalize and what patterns you're seeing in students getting back on track? And how long that's going to be kind of following us and what's being done to address it?
Yeah, great question. Thank you for asking. So our current seniors who are sitting in this seat, they were in eighth grade when the pandemic began. And so they spent their entire ninth grade year of high school virtually, which is not the best or the most optimal way to begin high school. And so as you can imagine, that could have or pose a barrier for certain pathways. When we spoke about, when we think about CTE, I think about the hands-on learning and instruction and experiences you get. We walk into Clifton Career Development Center and we see the students in the welding shop. They're actually using their hands. We walk into Travis Olley College High School. We see Jema, who's a phenomenal CTE teacher, and her team and the work they're doing in the hospitality department. Those all require authentic interactions, it requires connections, it requires the expertise and learning from industry partners, and that part was missed. So we are in the process of, you know, ensuring that students complete the pathway. One of the things we've noticed is competing priorities, right? And so when we think about pathways, scheduling, it posed a disruption to the completion of that pathway, which is why we are closely aligning ourselves with the collaborative piece, with working with our counselors and our campus administrators in ensuring that when a student comes into their office and they want to take dance and advanced dance is, you know, only offered at third period, the student will easily ask, hey, can I be removed out of this class? And the counselor or the student or the parent or the campus administrator or everyone may not be aware of how that disrupts the flow of the pathway in ensuring that we get students to completion status. So now in certain departments, and I'll highlight CTE because I've been working closely with Ms. Caesar, and our school leadership executive directors have worked with her team to put a process in place to where there is a specific protocol and action steps that the counselor must take and that principals, we acclimated them to this process at our principals' meeting before a student is removed from a CTE course. So now if a student walks into the office and they ask for a schedule change, it's not as simple as an easy click of the button, but it goes through multiple steps and layers for a checks and balance system. The administrators are a part of that. They sign off on it. They have to contact Ms. Caesar. And then we make sure that if this is a CTE student, we want them to be completers. And I think that collaborative process and the communication is really, really helping us to make very significant gains in ensuring that our students thrive.
And for clarification purposes, that was not here two years ago?
No, it was not here.
I knew that. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Six months ago.
I appreciate that. I have a follow-up specifically to your example. If a student, I know I've heard that some students get disrupted on either the dual credit pathway or especially the CTE pathway because they are, they fit those electives, not the gores, because they want to participate in advanced art or dance or an athletic. Are we doing things to make sure they are able to do both, that it's not an either/or? What are we doing to make sure they have more than one opportunity?
So those are very granular conversations that involve campus administrators and the student and teachers. And we have to look at what our students are asking for, and then we have to create that leverage or that space for it to exist, right? So we need real estate on the master's schedule in order for that to happen. The choice sheet drives the master's schedule, and then the master's schedule is what should drive the work. So if we are noticing that we have more interest, so I was at Lamar Middle School this week, and Principal Brunner, there is this high interest for digital and visual arts. And so he was speaking to me about how he has to create more course selections and look at teacher offerings and things like that because the kids are busting out of the seams with wanting this. So we have to look at our master's schedule. And in the past, we possibly have allowed other competing priorities and interests to drive the master's schedule, but it really should be the choice sheet that's doing that driving. And then, of course, we need a workable budget. But we let the choice sheet and the master's schedule do the talking for us and what the kids, what we're seeing. And you'll notice on different campuses, there are different pulses and there are different patterns, and there are different pockets of interest. And so the principal has to be in that work. What we've noticed last school year, and we made great strides with our executive director team this year, is coaching the principals around that. Because sometimes the master's schedule may have been delegated to a certain person on the team, and that one person is the gatekeeper or maybe the keeper of all knowledge, and that doesn't create a collaborative process in which there is equity of voice and student interest with choice and voice.
Thank you.
Thanks. That was really interesting. So I have a couple of questions looking at slide seven at the Industry-Based Certifications. First question is, so as I'm looking at some of this data, I see that we, first I wanted to double-check. My understanding is that these number, could these numbers actually go up by the end of this school year on this slide or no?
So only by like half of, like half of one, like by point five?
Okay.
And the reason is, is because some, some schools, some, some classes actually do averages across both semesters. So if they would have not gotten the credit in the first semester, but they averaged out across both, they don't get the credit for both.
Sounds good. All right. So I think it's interesting. First of all, I'm kind of excited to see that we went up a little bit for special education. So from this, from last year, thirteen point nine percent to this year, fifteen point two percent. So I'd be curious to know a little bit about that. I know it's not like a huge amount more, but it is a little bit of an upward trajectory there. Also interested in hearing a little bit about our the Black Ego Dis and the Hispanic Economically Disadvantaged Students. Sorry for shortening that, but for those two student groups, could you talk a little bit about if there were places where we saw, like for the eleven, I guess for like the eleven point six percent of Black Economically Disadvantaged Students and the fifteen point five percent of the Hispanic that actually are on track here? What was the strategy that really seemed to help with the success of those students? And what are some of the strategies that maybe were not working that we, that you all are trying to strengthen or reconsider?
That's a good question. So some of the strategies at the schools that I've talked to, it was the counseling team, just making them more aware of that CTE had to have completers and kids had to stay in the pathway. So from the department chair and the principal and the whole staff working together kind of to explain those pathways, I think that was one of the strategies that I've seen, just that whole awareness of that A, it's a, you know, it's part of accountability, and then B, it's good for kids. And in order for them to have the IBC, they have to stay in the pathway because the, most of the IBCs are at the third and fourth level.
That's helpful. And then do, does that apply as well to our students who are receiving special education services?
Yeah, I think Principal Dishner and the assistant principal there, they do a good job of educating the parents and the students about the pathway. So I think that's attributed a lot to that. And there's also, we've been working with the Special Education Department as well because there's courses that they can take. So we've kind of been partnering with them as far as trying to get the kids in the different pathways.
Another question I had was, you know, we see slight declines in several of the categories from last year to this year. For example, you know, with, with our white students, we went from fourteen percent to twelve point four percent. Is that because, you know, and similar patterns for many of the other groups? Asian students, I noticed, went from nineteen percent to eight point nine percent, which is actually a pretty big difference. So can you share a little bit about why maybe we have fewer students that are on track to earn an industry-based certification this year compared to last year?
Students have choice, so they could have ACC dual credit or AP/IB. So what we see is they'll take the first two years of CTE, and then they'll concentrate on those dual credit classes.
And then, okay, so what does, so if they're concentrating on the dual credit classes the first two years, can you explain that a little bit more like?
So the first year, they'll take the CTE class in their last two years is when they'll take the ACC dual credit on-ramps classes.
Okay. So what grade level is included in like this column? Is that, it looks like it's eleventh graders?
The students who are in eleventh and twelfth grade.
Okay. And so would that not apply to last year as well, though? Like we're comparing last year's eleventh graders to this year's eleventh graders?
Yes, that's correct. So some of the students were not recorded because we did the, as the students who passed the first semester. So with year-long averaging, those numbers could come up. That column was students who had passed, and it was the information that we received from TEA. So I think I said earlier, this is like lagging data. And so we had to come up with a metric. So we'll receive information from TEA in June after students have completed. So I'm hopeful those numbers will go up.
Okay. So Mr. Segura, so I'm sorry if I'm not totally getting this. So my understanding was that these numbers are probably not going to go up that much because it's a year-long average. So are these like, these are two different groups of students, right, from twenty-two, twenty-three, and then twenty-three to twenty-four?
So, yeah, so the, these are eleventh and twelfth graders that were showing from twenty-three, twenty-four, so this, this school year. But this includes students who may get an, over the course of this year, at the end of the year, get an upward adjustment because of the average across their senior year, or even, I guess, technically potentially the junior year as well. So, yeah, so this column, well, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary versus twenty-three, twenty-four, two columns we're comparing. As far as twenty-two, twenty-three, which is the question you're asking, right, is?
Why is it going down?
Is why is it going down?
Like we had nineteen percent Asian last year at this time, and now it's like half that.
Yeah.
Does that actually mean that there's that many, like half the, you know, amount of Asian students are on track to earn industry-based certifications this year?
So it's come down.
These are students that are in the seats.
They could have chosen a different pathway. I guess it's the easiest way to explain it. So it doesn't mean that the, the students are unsuccessful. It just means that they chose to go to a different pathway. We could provide information on what was the pathway that they chose to now go into and if they were successful in that pathway. I think that would be information that would kind of be, be, if it would be useful, we can get that.
So I think that, so I think when, so when we say eleventh and twelfth graders on track to become CTE completers, going to the definition of a completer, right, a student who has completed or passed three or more CTE courses for four credits within the same program of study, right? So I, I think one of the things that we need clarity on is, you know, previous years, and I think this is where Tammy was saying, like, there's been some adjustments in the calculation. And so I think we just need to be very clear as to, you know, how we're tracking each of these, you know, columns year by year. And that's one of the reasons we added completer at the beginning of this, at the beginning of this presentation, to be clear what this column was.
Got it. Okay, I think that's helpful. And then I think my understanding as well is, wasn't, recently didn't TEA narrow the number of courses that would actually qualify? So it's actually harder?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So in the previous years, we reported lagging data, and it was actual students who earned an industry-based certification in IBC. Now we're looking at on-track. So these are students who are actually seated in the seats in eleventh grade or twelfth grade. They have shown that they have matriculated through the aligned sequence. And now they're in the completer status. So we are projecting them to earn an IBC at the end of the school year. Also, yes, TEA has narrowed down the list in the area of focus for certifications. And in order to even get an accountability point, CCMR point, for students, they now have to be a CTE completer. In the past, they could have just passed an IBC. So I'm certified ninth grade or tenth grade, I passed, and I'm not even in an aligned program of study. Now you have to be in an aligned program of study in order to get the credit or the point as a completer and as for our schools for accountability purposes. So it's.
It's harder.
The stakes are higher. Yes.
Okay. Well, I know that you guys are on it. Thank you. I apologize for taking us down that rabbit hole. I just had to make sure I understood what I was saying and, you know, so thank you for your patience. All right, Dr. Foster.
Hi, y'all.
Hi.
Just two questions, and I know I've asked sort of variations of this, but it's, so it might be a little bit of an update. But, um, so we don't have, you know, in this particular deck, we don't have comparative data between schools in some of these areas, but just to pick on 3.2. So looking at college credits, we know there's wide variations across campuses, I think, right? And we've talked a little bit about that before, so I'm curious, sort of by way of update, what have we learned or what are we doing to at least bring up those lagging campuses? Or is that found to be somehow an irrelevant conversation because of the specificity of the particular campus? If that question makes sense.
So, so one thing that we saw with that trending data is we have some outlier campuses like Navarro. I'll take Navarro, for instance. One thing that Principal Stephen Colvin did was he created a college transitions class that he's been having. Those students who are not TSI-ready to begin their freshman year taking that dual credit course, because that's an early college high school, you have the opportunity to do that in ninth and tenth grade to begin your college journey. In our memorandum of understanding with ACC on our comprehensive campuses, that's not the case. So when you look at that data, what you'll see is from ninth through twelfth grade, our ninth and tenth graders are able to start their college journey at our early college high schools. At our comprehensive high schools, they're starting their journey in eleventh and twelfth grade. Particularly at Navarro, what you'll see is that that college transitions class was kind of an opportunity for those students to continue to prepare and get ready with that TSI. So they took the college transitions class. Once they became TSI-ready, spring semester is where you'll see he'll have an influx of students that'll be able to start their first dual credit class. And so that's just one of the outliers that we saw. You take a look at it about what our campuses are doing, just kind of wanted to mention Navarro is kind of an exemplar of how that's happening. We're hopeful that many of our other campuses will be able to do that as well. That comes along with the question that we talked about with our staffing, right? Making sure we have teachers who have that master's degree to be able to teach that course, right? Because that's the EDC 1300 course, which is the first course on the degree plans for our, many of our dual credit pathways that we have.
Yeah, that's the, so as you said, that with Navarro and the college transitions class, the first thing that popped into my mind was excellent instructor with specific expertise, either years in service plus knowing the community, that sort of thing. Versus or and, is there a specific, you know, sort of approach to the teaching of that class? you know, sort of approach to the teaching of that class? How, how, how structured is the college transitions class? Is it, you know, because sometimes there are folks who get the outcomes because they kind of know the game and they know what they're doing. Sometimes we have centrally or from wherever, you know, to sort of developed a curriculum that folks are leaning into, if, if that question makes sense. So which way are we going with this one?
So we're actually introducing more of a structured classroom where they're not only following the A C C curriculum that has been given to us, because that's a part of the S A C C accreditation, you have to follow that syllabus that the professor has. No matter if you're the A C C instructor or if you're the high school instructor on the Austin I S D side. But one thing that we're able to do on the Austin I S D side is also offer that supplemental curriculum that goes into that. So when we purchased Master Creep and we purchased I X L Learning, all of those things to help them become T S I ready, those are the strategies that we're embedding in those classrooms. So starting with that college transitions class, our C P M and our C P E, which is our college prep math and our college prep English classes, so that when you get to your senior year, if you're still not college and career ready, that's another course that only our seniors could take for a full year and we're bedding that curriculum in there as well. So really trying to make sure that we're pushing in, doing those small group instructions with organizations like A P I, working with those students to make sure that if we need to do some strong, some small group interventions, we have some groups of organizations that come in breakthrough, comi, mandr, communities and schools, A P I, they're all working with our students. Gear Up and Avid, doing an excellent job with working our students and pushing in as well to make sure that they're well prepared.
What are the, are there any sort of anticipated pinch points to success? So for instance, the readiness of the staff and, you know, of ready, the availability of the folks who are able to get it done. Are there any pinch points? If, if you understand what I'm asking?
Yes. Are you asking specifically to the college readiness or are you saying just in general with all of our teams, are there any pinch?
I was thinking narrow, but heck, you can answer generally.
Like, like one way to maybe address that is if you were to expand the program at, at Navarro to other campuses, other early college high schools, might be required that you don't currently have.
I like the way he said it.
Money. No, there are also, there are other success stories and while we, we get excited about the highlights and the anomalies, what we don't want is for it to be an anomaly still seven years from now, right? Because if it exists in our district, then it should exist across our entire school district. So we want those anomalies to in turn just be just standards of practice, which is why we create spaces for our middle school and high school principals to level up in very like-minded, like-minded leveled groups. And they present those strategies out to each other and it always happens and never fails. The next day, the principal who presented is inundated. Teams messages, emails, phone calls, their colleagues are asking, can I come over? Steve Colvin has been a great model and an example of so many novice principals who come to his campus and they walk with him to see what's going on. Another great model is Akins Early College High School. They've built their entire school and the entire culture around these seven academies. And within the seven academies, each one has an academy director, each one has its own assistant principal, its own cohort of teachers. And the students also travel and follow through this cohort in these seven academies. So they have to commit to one of those C T E pathways within the seven academies. And the goal is not just to stay in that cohort or academy for the entire four years. The goal is to be a completer and the goal is to be certified. So if you go to like our A C C graduation, our celebration at the end of the year, and the superintendent Segura was there last year, they showed up and showed out. Like Akins was in large numbers and Austin I S D in general, we have the largest number of graduates and the largest number of completers with all other districts being represented from surrounding areas. Also, within those academies, they have their own course sheet. So we have, you know, the general course sheet, but then the counselors and the academy directors for that particular academy have the course sheet that shows the completion pathway they have to go in. So there's no way around it. And then they are trained to support. The C T E teachers perform audits on that coursework. That's something that Principal Urban presented that we would like to see replicated. And then one more example, Paretta's, which is a school that is just becoming next level with the strategies that they are doing. So Paretta's is a second-year principal, Principal Ramirez, and they are a part of the Akins feeder pattern. So what they noticed, the principal presented to our principals recently, and she said that her first year there last year, she walked around and she asked the students, what's special about Paretta's? And she really didn't get any answers about what's special. She said, right down the street, we have the Liberal Arts Academy, and then over here to my right, we have Green Tech at Small, but what's special about Paretta's? So she started this journey and engaged students, parents, C A T members, C A C, in conversations around that. And they decided they wanted to build a pathway, a health science pathway to help support their feeder pattern at Akins. So the Akins Academy Director came to the campus last year, engaged the kids in conversations. The eighth grader's visited Akins. And now with the help of Tammy Caesar and the Executive Director of the team is Kim Batra, we have a seamless pathway now that's going to go in to support it. And so principals heard Principal Ramirez presenting, and now they're asking and making inquiries about what can we do to make our school stand out? Because we want our kids to be locked into their neighborhood school. You shouldn't have to be bused across the district or across town to be in a pathway that you align with. And so we have to listen to the voices of our students and then our budget and our master's schedule should drive those decisions and those interests.
I do have more question, this, this is, it's almost like, maybe we're not there yet, or maybe we are there yet. There is that reality of it's the centralization versus individualization, for lack of a better word, right? And so on one hand, some of the things y'all are talking about are things, it's like, we've got to get everything up to a level where, you know, I'm, I'm not satisfied with competence, you know, a level of excellence when it comes to the different pieces of the puzzle. Once you're there, or as a part of being there, there's a, a lean into the individualization. So in other words, a principal asking questions of kids and asking questions and learning what really excites that local community. Or when they look down the vertical and up the vertical and they see, oh, the opportunities for alignment, well, that's a local conversation in a sense. So I, I love hearing the idea of strategy that we're going to get everyone up and we're going to lean into opportunities. And we're also going to train principals up in how to lean into local contextualization as the, as, as the font of their program, of their eventual programming. That's all cool to hear. I will also, I don't know, kind of maybe lift up and ask a question related to like a site like Navarro. Because one of the things that's always struck me of, about the work at Navarro is the number of newcomers. And the, the mobile, like, it's, it's a lot. And yet they seem to achieve. And when we say newcomers, we're talking about, you know, kids who are just coming into the country and they've got huge needs coming from their unique circumstances. And I tell you, over and over again, one of the things that happens when I talk to parents there is just the absolute love they have for the school, the love they have for the community. I mean, it's just, it's an overwhelming, repeated experience that like I will never grow tired of, by the way. But that's always for me raised, it's like, how? How is it that someone just got here from Afghanistan? And it's like their second year and they've come so far and are doing so well, they're so happy. And also achieving academic success in a way that's just like blowing my mind. So I don't know if there's anything to sort of, I would, I guess I would ask you about that a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, so the first thing that comes to mind is school leader effectiveness, the principal stability. So there, when you look at schools that have, and not just in the principals, like how many years they've been on the campus, but in teachers and their stability, teacher retention is the first thing that comes to mind. Like, we want to be able to not only attract and recruit great talent, but to be able to keep that talent in that campus because that's what makes it unique, that's what makes it flourish, is when we don't have so much instability. So that principal's stability and the longevity of him being at that campus and being able to flourish and nourish those systems is always a positive that stands out. But then also the systems have to be sustainable, right? We were talking about Akins Early College High School and that principal, this is his second year at the campus. We've had great leaders before that, one behind me, our Chief Talent Strategy Officer. But those systems are able to sustain and they should be able to sustain from leader to leader. If not,
Because those Akins systems are older than two years old.
Yes. Yes. But it, it, that's not all, it's not magic. So it doesn't mean that if a new principal comes, that they're able to sustain it even if systems are there. So it takes that, that level of coaching and development and this principal being coached by the school leadership team, the principal being supported by the teams that are represented here. And then us able to communicate and articulate what makes this school effective. For some, it just falls off because we're not able to articulate it. If we can't articulate it, then we can't continue it. So it's that process of continuous school improvement and monitoring and ensuring that we have the right supports in place when the systems were first there to ensure that they stay in the future.
And I heard that sometimes maybe when you have great A Ps at the high school level that are there, maybe they go in deeper into the vertical and so that you kind of keep that homegrown, organic feel. All right, I think I've done my job. Am I okay?
Oh, yes.
Trying to ask questions correctly and all that other good stuff. But I appreciate the, the work that you're doing. And there, here's the, you know, the downer note. We ain't there. I mean, we, we ain't there. So you know what? Let me ask one more, sorry. In terms of working with A C C, and the points of alignment and how it's working, the points where there might be challenges, how are we doing on that? And then I keep coming back to another piece of comparative, which is if we look at other school districts that are also working with A C C, I don't think they have the same numbers that we do. And I think we're lagging, and somebody could verify this and prove me wrong, but I think we're lagging against some of our other partnering or neighboring school districts. So can you talk to me a little bit about strategy or what's going on with our relationship with A C C? What are the pinch points there? What can we lean into to get it better?
So we're currently, you know, having our conversations with the new chancellor, with Russell. We've had an opportunity to sit down with him and talk about some challenges and some barriers. You know, we talked about the T S I, we talked about how that was a gatekeeper and our students just could not begin their journey at A C C. And so we are working with him on what does that look like with the structure of the degree plans that we have and the entry point for our students? So one thing that we were able to do, prior to him getting here actually, was to revamp the degree plans that we have in place for our early college programs. We were able to go in and move that alignment. So the Level One certificates that you see that are part of our A three F accountability, going in as a certificate seeker and then continuing on to where that Level One is stackable into the Associate's degree. That's a big, huge change that we had not had previously before. So now all of those particular pathways have a Level One certificate that's on the front end and our students are able to begin that journey. So it goes back to what Tammy talks about with you're starting with the C T E course that's articulated. And then you kind of bank that and have that escrow. At the end of the year, you enter into your next course that's a part of that Level One certificate. You continue to stack those credentials and then you have your Level One certificate continuing on to go to that Associate's degree, but it begins with C T E. So keeping them in that sequence and that, that program of study that Tammy talked about is definitely going to be helpful. And that's something that we're really grateful for, working with A C C to see that and have that vision to say, you know what, that's something that we can definitely make a change on. The other thing that we had the opportunity to talk about, I think this was in February, when Mr. Segura and myself and Dr. Wilson and had a meeting with Russell and his team, we talked about the T S I and opening up that gateway and how there are other ways for us to begin that journey. We talked about creating a non-T S I bundle so that our freshmen and our sophomores could get started. So we've been having those conversations with our principals as we've been having our principal C C M R meetings to talk about, what does this look like for your campus? So taking your fine arts credit for dual credit, your music appreciation, art appreciation class, maybe taking a speech class or a business class. So a part of the A three F accountability for that is that you need nine credit dual hours in anything in order to meet that C C M R accountability. Well, if we created three courses that allow for them to get their C C M R college readiness attainment, then now that shows that our A three F accountability is going to be on the rise. And so we're going to start looking into that with A C C and building upon that on ways that we can incorporate that into our degree plans and on all of our campuses.
Thank you. And I apologize for the way I said, um, my job is done. What I was referring to is not like giving you a hard time, like that's my job. But I was referring to the, the challenge of asking what I really want to ask you and, and really learning and articulating with the structure and mandates of the state of Texas and, and all that other stuff. So if, I hope I didn't create offense when I said my job is done or something like that. I'm just trying to survive this area. I got more, but I'm gonna stop.
So, Trustee Foster, one thing I'll add before you stop, finish point, is, you know, we have conversations with other school districts around us and certainly there's always something to learn. But I, I do want to highlight the diversity and complexity of a system as large as A I S D. You know, a lot of times, you know, we do get compared to school districts, but they may have one or two high schools versus the number that we have. And, and, and I think that for us, you know, to do it well, and we, and certainly, Dr. Laura Hart knows this, is to move A C C's numbers, A I S D's numbers have to move. Like, it doesn't work, like, we, we are so big, like, that for them to be where they want to be, we have to be where we need to be as well. So I just, there's a lot to learn from each other and we're really excited about Dr. Laura Hart coming on board because there's a, there's like, almost like shared goals. And we talked about this last time. I would love to get to a place where he's here presenting with us and we're presenting with him because they are genuinely shared.
I'm here for that. And by the way, if, if you're talking to me and you want to say, Foster, they have two high schools in their district. Can you be real? I'm, I'm okay for that. And so I appreciate the superintendent kind of like having your back and saying, Foster, check yourself. But I, I do understand, I think it's a great point, that even as I pull out the idea of a comparative with other districts, I do understand that districts vary in very many ways. So that point is very well taken. And all other conversations will continue in our tracker and all that other stuff. Thank you all.
All right, Trustee Hunter.
I have a question for Doc Seb. I need, it's actually a clarification question. Because when I look at G P M three point four, it reads, students on track to pass at least one A P or I B class. Are we just talking about passing or are we talking about passing like for the A P exam?
Good question. Yep. So this goal is just for the course. One thing I will say is that the previous goal was just measuring course enrollment. This changed, so it has always been measuring course enrollment for A P or I B. This goal is changing to ensuring that they have completed the A P or I B course. The other thing to keep in mind about the change for this is that it's also measuring it at any time while they are in high school. So it helps students not necessarily have to choose A P every year. So we know that there are a lot of variety of options for students to take. So students could be taking an A P course this year and next year they choose a dual credit or next year they choose an on-ramps course and they would still be considered as part of that.
So can we put that slide back up on, on page eight? No, I'm up. There we go. So, yes. I will say that that's more disconcerting for me, knowing that it's just passing the class. I thought this was getting some sort of credit. Let me just go, I'm gonna have to just read my question right off the paper. Based on the data in the table, what is the district's plan to support students to increase course completion among the groups furthest from the aspirational goal?
So there is a variety of different strategies that we've been working on. One of the things I did mention before in October also is that there is a partnership with the PAL Foundation and Equal Opportunities Schools with Anderson and Akins trying to increase the representation in A P and I B students, underrepresented students in A P and I B courses. In addition, Austin I S D just recently received a Lasso grant from T E A focusing on computer science principles, which will be working at five campuses. What's really great about that opportunity is that it's a strong collaboration between C T E, which is where computer science is housed, and advanced academics, which is where advanced placement courses are. And it will allow more students the opportunity to take A P computer science principles and have exposure to sort of that introductory, introduction to computer science, as well as the grant itself pays for the A P exam for those students taking A P computer science principles. So we're really excited about that and hopefully increasing the number of students taking that course. There are also other new A P courses that are coming. African-American Studies is going to be launched nationwide next year and is on our choice sheets for students to take. The other change is this, this past year, there was A P pre-calculus, which was a new A P course. This year, we offered A P pre-calculus and advanced pre-calculus and on-ramps pre-calculus. Next year, there will only be A P pre-calculus or on-ramps pre-calculus, so that there is not this additional advanced course. I also hear your question that this is just about course completion. And so while this is what the goal is, And so while this is what the goal is, what we have to report on. We are looking at course, um, not course completion, but how they are doing in the course. So one of the things we've been tracking this year is the use of AP classroom across campuses. Because that is an online tool that is free for students and campuses and aligned to the curriculum. Um, we are working on trying to track that so that when we get the AP score results back in July. We will also be tracking that or mapping that to their AP course complete or AP classroom usage. So we will have more data for you in July to see, you know, did the campuses and the classes that were using AP classroom at a higher percentage rate? My prediction hypothesis is that they will have a higher passing rate on the AP course exam, but we won't know that until July. So I think part of the reason that the, or at least my estimate or guess of why this um, board goal has always been about courses and not the AP exam. Is because the AP exam data is only available once a year. Um, but we do know that we want to give you real time data and progress on what we are working on throughout the year.
Let me be clear, I, I'm not concerned at all about the AP test or how many students pass it or not. My, my major concern is what you guys have stated in your um. I think it's page nine on the root cause analysis. Parents need to understand, uh, Mr. Superintendent, the courses that their kids are getting in. And I do not, like, I, you guys now know that's not happening. I'm worried about what this does to a kid, right? Like, did we have a conversation with this family? Explain to them the requirements like we would do for dual language, like we would do for anything else so that they understand the impact. That concerns me about the AP classes and then about the college credits. Sticking kids in classes that are going to mess with their GPA when they're finally in college. Cause those courses don't go away, right? I'm, I'm, my kid has a certain GPA that could have been higher, but uh, we dropped the class and we failed the class, right? And I'm in the system and I didn't know. So I can only imagine what it's like for other parents. So I'm glad to see that and that leads me to uh, my next uh, sort of question. When we look at the um, root cause analysis and I'm still, um, I had a really great conversation or I guess a really great text. With the coach about root cause analysis, because I don't have like good understanding of what that means. And the way she explained it to me was that, you know, you're asking why five times? Like kids aren't doing well in AP, why? Uh, because we're not telling parents what's going on, why? Because we're not aligned, like what you've come up with. Um, is how she kind of directed me. And so. Given all of this information, I'm just, the one that I'm mostly concerned about is um, the one that's the CCMR case management system. And the clarifying question is, we don't have this thing, does that thing exist?
Yes.
Okay, so now. If we're gonna do all of thi- this is budgetary, right?
Yes.
Cause that's not gonna come out of thin air. And I mean, it's, it gotta be proven to work. Because we're letting kids down, student outcomes, we're letting families down. And there, there's dollars attached to that, right? And so I really, Mr. Superintendent, want more information about this system and how it's going to impact across whichever lines. Um, whichever budget sources. I think that that will help me maybe. Understand a little bit better. I think Dr. Foster asked this question, or no, maybe it was uh, President Singh. When I look at the three point two, students who are on track to earn twelve credits by race and ethnicity. I'm gonna ask my question, but I don't want you to answer because I believe you already answered it. But if I've missed a piece of it, then we'll, we'll grab it out. I wrote, uh, given what we see on slide five. Looking at students who are furthest from their identified goal, black uh, students that are economically disadvantaged, American Indians. And special, students receiving special education services. Like the strategy for getting to, to addressing that deficit. And I heard a little bit of that, but if somebody with one person would like to add just a tiny bit more, I, I think I might, that question might sit better in my soul.
So really just going in depth to um, like you talked about with the uh, student management tool. I think that's something that definitely is going to help us to be able to dig deeper into what a student needs. We're not able to see right now what the student is doing in real time because we don't have a system that allows for us to do that. So when you talk about how are we gonna get them there? How are we gonna actually see how close they are to uh, meeting that TSI? How many times have they taken it? Are we testing them too much? What is the frequency? What is the dosage? We need to be able to see all of that whole child in one system, in one place. So that's why we talk about needing something that's student level that will allow for us to see that. That's why we were looking at all the different tools and vetting them to see, is there something out there that has worked? We have talked to many of our colleagues from the Texas Urban Council, talking about what they are actually utilizing. And we've taken a look at that as a team, we've taken a look at that with our principals and with our campuses, with our specialists, with our counselors. Everybody's all in on making sure that we have a tool that is able to do that. I think having that full picture is exactly what we're gonna need to make those educated decisions um, on our staff. And like you said, having those real live conversations with our parents and with our students. That tool that the counselors can be able to use to say, I see that you did this in eighth grade. You've already passed your English portion of the TSI. Now you're able to take this course in dual credit, you're able to go into this pathway of advanced academics. But I see that you struggled in your math. What are the interventions that we're gonna put in place? But if we can't see that, how can we make that educated decision if we're not looking at all of those scores together? To make that decision in eighth grade as to where they're gonna go on their pathway and stay into that course of sequence of the program of study for CTE. Or staying on an advanced track in AP or IB. Did I answer that?
You did, and I, I think that Dr. Fannin, the part that, that I think we kind of gl- glossed over and we need to go back to is that. Us having the information is great, right? But that piece about the parent conversation.
Absolutely.
Because I'm, like, I just had today pulled up. You know, I don't even know if parents know that they can go and see what classes their kids have already taken, right? I don't know that they know that. I went to go check because I happened to see, oh, there's an I. From seventh grade, she took a high school course. We need to get that cleared up. And the school, I called them, they cleared it up, it was beautiful. But I don't know that parents can even keep track, that they know that they can keep track and see how many credit hours their kids have or what they're taking, right? I remember in, back in the day, mom, like I signed up for wood shop and metal shop and my mom was like X, wear perfect four point O, X, X, uh, what was it called? Lotus one, two, three. She knocked me out of all of those classes and put, parents don't, it's not, like, they don't have that same thing, kids are doing that at school, right? Now, again, I had to pay for it, I made my daughter bring it home and we looked at it. But I don't know that everybody knows what their kid is doing. And then when they find out, they're like senior year. And it's like, oh, you're not graduating or you're missing, as we just recently experienced, you're missing something, right? And so I, I don't know, like, if that system has a, does it have a parent facing thing or the, or what's happening with that?
It's, 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 one of the ones that we looked at is the internal system, right? But we also have, currently we have Naviance, which is out facing for our parents. So being able to make sure that that TSI data is loaded in there, making sure that um, that information is going out. It has an email system, it has a messaging system for our parents as well. So being able to see the data, make sure the data is putting it to the platform and then actually having those conversations with our parents. Because as a parent, you're gonna want to know if my kid took this exam in eighth grade and they were two points away from meeting that cut score. Why is it that now that they're a junior and nobody bothered to make sure that we took that exam again and that we went in on those interventions to say, you're two points away? What is the skill set that you're missing that allowed for you to be two points away? But you did it in eighth grade and now we're talking about doing it again in eleventh grade. We should have did it again in eighth grade. We need to be able to see that full picture.
And where's Naviance?
It's at all of our middle school and.
No, I mean, you, like you said, for parents. Like, where, where do parents find that?
It's one of our tools that um, messages our parents and messages our students. They use it for their transcripts, they upload and talk to the college campuses when they do their applications. It's a tool that they are currently using on our middle school and high school.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
So um, I think in the last year, this is something that's come up a couple of times. Is the inability for us to be responsive opposed to reactive. And you know, there are so many individuals within our education system that interact with our students. You know, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. And what we've continued to hear is that there isn't the ability to understand where our students are in their academic journey. And then have that information to be used to help inform course selection, right? Or any decision that a student may have. And it's, it's one of those things that we believe, um, you know, as we go through this process. If we get it in place, it'll give us the ability to support our students over their journey, like with AIST. And, and right now we just don't have clarity into it. You know, it is something that we're gonna have to move forward with in order for it to be stood up before next year. It's kind of one of those things that if we don't take advantage of it, then we could conceivably lose a whole another year. Uh, so it is something we've already looked at internally. Uh, we have the ability um, to, to pick that up. Um, it's not an inexpensive um, uh, investment, but it is one that we think will help us uh, long term. And, and help us be again responsive and not just reactive. Uh, one way to kind of compare it is, you know, two years ago we were talking about dashboard for evaluations. We didn't have that. You need clarity into it to be able to manage and to support this, this, the whole entire system better and this is one of those tools. But anyway, that's, and we can provide additional clarity, trustee Hunter, uh, around other um, kind of tools that this uh, platform provides.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. Hello. I wanted to follow up on um, a, a wondering or I guess a technical question that I had while uh, trustee Foster was asking kind of. The qualities of a campus that make it more likely for a student to be able to achieve um, or demonstrate the, you know, GPM three point two. Um, and so the one I have is, does, does every campus, is every high school and, and I guess middle school have the ability to administer the TSI?
Yes, so all of our high school campuses and our middle schools um, are equipped with having the TSI units on their campus. That's something that we front load on the campuses every year. Uh, we recently just met with our middle school principals to talk about an eighth grade TSI plan. And Dr. Wilson allowed for us to come in and meet with the middle school principals to share that plan with them, to talk about what this looks like for a spring TSI assessment for them. Um, so we're working on that plan with our middle school principals to ensure that those units are there, but that also the preparation is there and that they're prepared. Um, to be able to administer this and prepare those students before they go in to take that exam. Um, looking and doing that, um, that's on our assessment calendar for May. So we've been in talks with our principals, getting them ready. They're very excited about having this opportunity, working with our high school feeder pattern principals. Each of them have been talking to each other about that level of support because it indeed is gonna take some of that heavy lift off of our high school campuses. Knowing that their eighth graders are gonna come in prepared and ready for um, these opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you. Separately, or I still just guessed related to the GPM three point two. On slide five, I appre- I appreciated, or actually wait, I'm confused. Yes, I got confused, I apologize. You uh, mentioned in um, slide six, you delineated between concentrators and completers. And then in the follow-up questions to trustee Boswell's, uh, or the answers to trustee Boswell's questions, uh, you talked about the number of concentrators versus completers. Um, and I was interested to hear or to read about um, strategy on mental health in relation to CTE and, and completers versus uh, concentrators. And so I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what kind of change in strategy or adjustment we might see uh, related to that area?
Sorry. Can you clarify that question?
Sure.
You're asking about the mental health of students as it relates to them completing a pathway?
Sure, in, in the, the questions that, or in the responses to trustee Boswell's questions, um, it was brought up that uh, mental health. Was going to be looked at as a way to increase the number of students that are moving from concentrators to completers. And uh, you talked about there being seven thousand concentrators and fifteen hundred completers. So I just wanted to know what we, we might expect to see in that regard.
I don't remember saying mental health, but maybe I did, maybe I was confused. Oh, counselors and, yes, that's the name of the department. Working with the counselors.
Okay, I, I was gonna.
The department name is counseling and mental health.
And so the counseling side would work with, with our academic side and then the mental helps and supports with SEO and then with the campuses. So it's one division, it's, and it's split into two. So I think she was just referring to the whole departmental name.
Okay, sure, it's, thank you for that. It's uh, question three, just for uh, y'all's sake and it was specifically the response to GPM three point three. Um, but that's okay, I couldn't.
Okay.
We can get more information on that, that later, that's totally fine. The. That actually is it. The last thing I have is just a comment, I, I really, I was with uh, trustee Zapata last week at uh, Baradez Middle School. And so I got to hear principal Ramirez talk about um, the new courses and the CTE health science pathway that's gonna be coming to Baradez. And all the new courses that are gonna be included in that. And that was just really great um, to hear about. And so I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Caesar, because I know your name was specifically mentioned last week as, as being a big part of that. So um, that's, it's great to hear. And additionally, um, we've invited principal Ramirez to come along with us to Casey and to Blasur. To talk about that to those specific communities. So um, I just appreciated y'all's, y'all's work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees, any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Um, we have a great diversity and expertise sitting in front of us at the table. And I, as we look ahead to redoing our scorecard, we know that CCMR is a goal. And we know that that's one of our five goals by state um, rule and by the importance of it. And I think that we know that it's really important, that's why we're talking about it tonight and, and why we um, track it so much. And I would um, love any thoughts you have to share. You know, it's the board's role to set the, the goal itself and the administration's role to set the GPMs. And so speaking to the goal, um, if you're okay, superintendent Segura with me asking, um, the people in front of us, do you think our goal? Do you think we have a good goal? And do you think we have a goal that correlates into the success of our students after they graduate? Are you okay with that question?
I, I would, I mean, I think that's like.
No is an okay answer.
I, I would prefer to have like a dialogue around that. So I think that's more of like a back and forth and I just am not certain that we're gonna get to a point where we would be satisfied with.
That's fine with me, yeah, okay.
So I'm more than happy to have the full team here when we talk about it uh, as, as the overall.
That would be great.
With the scorecard.
I just, I value your input so much and would love to have that be part of it when we get to that. Thank you.
Great idea. Okay, so thank you trustees for this productive conversation. So now we must vote on whether or not we will accept this monitoring report. So as a point of clarity, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we have had a satisfactory conversation with this superintendent and the staff. Um, and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for our students lines up with our vision for them. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report.
I move to accept the monitoring report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so trustees, is there any discussion on this item? All right, so having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Gonzalez to accept the monitoring report. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, thanks y'all, great job.
Thank you.
Really, really good. Okay, so now we will move to the consent agenda. So trustees, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull for a separate vote?
Yes.
Okay. Which one is?
I would like to pull nine point one.
One, okay, that's related to the TEA innovative course, multilingual acculturation studies. Okay, thank you. Any other um, items to be pulled? Okay, great. So um, secretary, so we just have Candace Hunter, trustee Hunter, uh, pulling nine point one for a separate vote. So Lynn Boswell, uh, or secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Government.
Yes, I move to approve uh, items ten point one to ten point three. Item eleven point one, items twelve point one to twelve point four.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Trustees, is there any discussion on any of these consent items? All right, so having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Gonzalez to approve agenda items ten point one through ten point three, eleven point one, twelve point one. And twelve point one through twelve point four. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously, thank you. And so now we will move to the one item that was pulled from the agenda, that's agenda item nine point one. So um, secretary Boswell, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve agenda item nine point one, TEA innovative course, multilingual acculturation studies for newcomers.
And then um, trustees, are there any questions or comments on this?
Yes, um, in the backup, there's uh, some really good answers to our questions. Yes, um in the backup, there's uh some really good answers to our questions, uh but it's a, I'd like to have a little discussion around this. Um if we can have uh the, I almost said sponsors of this bill, wrong place.
And Dr. Diaz and Cody can, yeah, answer any questions.
Perfect.
Good evening.
Oh yeah, there's no second.
Actually, you can have discussion without even making a motion, just according to David Cobb. Um I thank you for your answers, and like I said, for people who want to go and see them, they're in the backup. And I have been uh doing some, I wanna say research, but talking to people who are uh the head of their um MEDs and MECs. In Texas and kind of finding out like what they thought about the program and who um. Like who it could best serve. And I guess uh one of the places that I I kind of looked at was Plano. And I I feel like this is a a program that's really good for a place that doesn't have a lot of resources, right? Austin is not that place, we have really good resources. And I worry, as we've already heard this evening, about the course. So the question I'm gonna ask right now is, how many, uh what's the duplication on the course? Like, how many places would this course be?
So initially, for this next year, the proposal is to start it at IHS. And it really is a continuation of the Newcomer Empowerment Project that we've been working at at IHS with them. Um it's an opportunity to continue the work that we've been doing and build upon it. Uh and then eventually, yes, we would like to offer it to other campuses, really any campus that would like to to provide it. The the benefit to this course is really, it goes above and beyond what an ESOL course or an ELDA course would do. Where it's very focused on English language development. And it really shifts to a college and career focus, so it's kind of very timely after this presentation, right? Making sure that students are very informed, and uh we even included some parents in our project this year. Uh the students went to universities, they were able to really see like what is the trajectory that they could take as a student in the United States. Oftentimes, as they come into the United States, there's a lot of really new stuff, including the language. Um and so making sure that they have the most complete access to understanding uh what their opportunities are. And the full extent of the value that they bring to the classroom, which is their bilingualism that they're developing as they learn English. Um and so it's it's about, yes, learning a new culture, but also um building upon what they're bringing to the classroom. And really, and really taking an opportunity to value it. So so it's really a very focused course for students that would be in one, maybe two years in US schools. It probably would not go beyond that, and it wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate that every campus would offer it. But it would be part of our pathway that we've already created and certainly an option for campuses to use. I would anticipate Navarro might be interested, they have a large number of of, there might be other campuses, right? But we're starting at IHS, uh and and again, it's in a continuation so that we can continue the work that we started with our empowerment project. But not pulling kids out of class and actually doing it in a class time that's very purposeful.
So now I guess, I guess I have a little bit of question right there, you said, this would actually be a course, so they would not, in place of an elective, they would take this course?
Yes, they would receive a state elective course, credit.
And I guess my question around that is, why wouldn't we just bake that into the whole school? Why would we have to have a class? Like, why wouldn't you just bake that into IHS? Like, you come here, you're here ninth grade, tenth grade, or is it ninth and tenth, right?
Yes.
Ninth and tenth, these are some things we can offer, s- set aside instead of like, here, take an elective away. Where, you know, probably gonna pick up more BICs there than you will anywhere else, because you're gonna be learning something that you enjoy. I guess that's my question, is why would, why would, why would there have to be a course for this? Why would it just be baked into the school?
Yeah, so so the project that we have done this year has not been a course, right? The the empowerment project that we have going at IHS. Um and really, in working with the teachers there, uh that, it really came from them. They were like, there are so many things that I want to continue to do with this group of students, and I can't, because not all of my students are in this project, right? Because it was this, it was a group of tenth graders, it wasn't all of the tenth graders at IHS um that were doing this very extensive project. So so really, the teachers were saying, we'd like to have a class that would be offered where the students can do continued writing and learning. And reflecting on the, on what they're, what they're taking in um in this project. And so it, this innovative course was just released from the state last year. Um and initially, I will be very transparent, it wasn't a course that we were necessarily considering. But it was a, it was an opportunity to be able to continue the work that we started with this project in a way that is built into their schedule. Um again, I don't anticipate that that every campus would offer it, uh it would be an option. Uh it would be just another way for students to get this opportunity, and you're exactly right, it's something that should be baked in. Um I do anticipate that with the project that we built this year, uh we'll continue, in fact, at the end of the year in May, you guys will all receive an invitation soon. Once we finalize all the details, we're going to have our Newcomer Empowerment uh Conference. And we, the name is not decided, that's why I haven't sent the invitation, we're still working with the students on that. Um and so the idea there is that those students that have been in the project are going to showcase what they've learned. And share it with the ninth graders and the tenth graders that didn't participate. Um and I would anticipate we would continue that, it's that kind of skill that's being built within the, within this project. And that will be built into the course. Leadership, giving them presentation opportunities, taking them to universities, getting them involved with with people who have been immigrants. Who have come as secondary students and are very successful. We had a panel come and talk to the kids uh this year. And so those kinds of things will be built in and they'll be able to share them with uh with other students through an end of year summit. That my vision is that it would be a district wide summit, that we would bring in all of our students. And they would all get to hear about the wonderful things that these groups of students are getting to, that are learning about, and they begin to be the experts. So, yes, i- in an ideal, you know, yes, it should be baked in. But it also needs to, you know, there's an opportunity to have this course that is already provided from TEA. That really builds on the things that we were building on with the project.
I will say, Mr. Superintendent, I feel like we are talking out of both sides of our mouth, as my granny Ray would say. Um student choice and voice is supposed to be driving our courses. How many, was this on a sheet where kids said, like ninety of them said, I wanna take this class? Or, because what I heard you say is, teachers thought, I wanna do this? And then, so it has to follow, kids now have to choose, right? And if we don't move kids, then we have to kind of go, hey, parent, go do this. And that's not what we're saying we want to happen on our campuses. So I I think you've answered my questions very thoroughly, I think you've done a great job um providing me the information and the backup. Um and thank you, guys, I appreciate your time.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, so um we had a motion by Secretary Boswell, uh do we have a second on approving nine point one? Do we have a second? Just because you have, you're seconding it does not mean you're supporting it, FYI, it's just um to get it to a vote.
If there's no second, it dies for lack of a second.
Oh, it dies?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have a second? All right, then I guess it 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 dies. Okay, I've never done that before, that's a first. Thank you um to the staff and and to Trustee Hunter for um raising this issue, appreciate that. Okay, so at this time, um as as shared earlier, the board will not um hold their workshop tonight. And plans to reschedule this work for the middle um of April, so we will now recess the open meeting at nine oh two PM. And move to the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five five one point oh seven four, five five one point oh seven two, five five one point oh seven three, five five one point oh eight seven, five five one point oh seven six. Five five one point oh eight two one and five five one point oh seven one. When we are finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. Uh the adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. So thank you very much um for joining us and have a good evening. All right, uh we will now reconvene the open meeting at eleven forty seven PM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Gonzalez to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, the motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned, the time is eleven forty seven PM, thank you.